We'll call to order the planning commission meeting for Thursday, March 21st, 2019. Would you please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, please call to order.
Yes, Commissioner Knoblock?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Geisler?
Present.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here.
And Commissioner Heikl is not up to meet tonight.
Our first order of business this evening will be to adopt our agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmalki. The discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Agenda has been adopted. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of our January 17th meeting.
Chair Schwartz, I move that we approve the minutes from January 17th meeting.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries with Commissioner Schmalki abstaining. Our first order of business under new business this evening is planning case 19-1, a site plan for 100,500 square feet expansion at Green Bay Packaging, 555-87th Lane. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners and Chair. The applicant is proposing to do an addition to 100,500 square feet. The site is Green Bay Packaging, excuse me, located down in Evergreen Industrial Park, off of 90th Street and 87th Lane. The site is here, it's bounded on the west by the Burlington Northern Railroad tracks. The site is currently 259,326 square feet, and this is the current site plan. What the applicant is proposing to do is four additions to the facility. They're proposing a 44,000 square foot addition here, which is warehouse space, a 47,000 square foot addition here in purple, which is production, a 6,400 square foot addition here in yellow, which is primarily employee space, and then an area out here, which is in green, which is 2,200 square feet, and that's a design lab. Green Bay Packaging produces cardboard cartons, shipping cartons, and then display items. And this is, this will, the production or the display area here, that's where they'll do designing for the products that they produce on site. This is the site plan expansion. This is the proposed addition to the, this is a production side, which is here in purple on the south, southeast side of the building. The railroad tracks are off to the corner down here. This is the proposed expansion on the north end, this is warehouse. This area here is employee space. This space over here is the design with a small area of the production down here. This is the main entrance coming in off of 90th, and then this entrance here is the entrance that comes in off of 87th. As you can see on this overall site plan, they are proposing some changes in the drainage. The existing pond, which is located here, is being modified, and then a second pond is being placed in here to handle the stormwater runoff. Landscape plant, excuse me, they are preserving a large chunk of trees up in this area here, and the other landscaping that's being proposed is primarily around the perimeter and around the front and parking lot here. Staff is asking that some additional trees be planted along this driveway here and then along this side of the drive coming in off of 87th. This is an existing stormwater pond down in this location. Here's the grading plan. They're really straightforward on the north end. Again, this is the driveway coming in and wrapping around to the truck loading area over here. This is on the west side here, and this is on the kind of the east side where they come in off of 87th. Here's where the new ponds are going to be located, reconfigured drainage ponds, here and here. Building elevations, the employee area and the design area are located on the front of the building and will match the existing facade of the front of the building. That through the, I don't know if you can see it here, I can pass it off, it's kind of, it's an exposed aggregate with kind of a burnish, stone, and that will match the existing front part of the building. But warehouse and production areas are a raked finish, and this will match the existing finish on those portions of the building. Because this is not listed as an approved building material in the industrial district, this material here will have to go to the city council for approval. That would be the only item that would go, the actual site plan, the decision, final decision rests with the planning commission. Here's kind of a overhead artist rendering of what the site will look like after the expansion. You've got the production area here, warehouse area here, this is the employee slash training area, and this is the, the design area right here. With that, I will answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience also to answer questions and make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? Commissioner Schmalki.
So I do have one question. So I was reading through the parking requirements.
Yep.
So there was a section there about, required is 370, correct?
Correct.
What, how many do they currently have, do we know?
116 of them.
They have 116?
116.
116. And they're proposing then to install an additional 153, or?
No, they're proposing a total of 100, um...
153.
Yeah, 153 spaces.
Okay, that would be the total? And the required is 370?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
They do on the site plan show areas on the site where it can go, primarily here, that's a landscape plant, up here, 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 and then also on the south side on the back, down in here.
That's where the proposed additional?
Typically, those come into play if the use changes and a more intense use comes in and has, requires more employees than this company does. The applicant can, has a better explanation as to how the Green Bay Packaging sees their growth occurring over the next few years.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission at this time from Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, is the concrete support pad on the west end there, the backside of the building, is that net new, or is that already in place for the trailer storage?
Which, which area here?
Along the finished goods warehouse and the existing finished goods along the stormwater pond there, they're proposing a concrete trailer support pad, that's, yes, that right?
Right, that, that'll be new.
That'll be new? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, so if that raked concrete is on the building already?
Correct.
Is it not approved in the industrial zone, is that what you're saying?
Well, raked concrete, Commissioner Casey, is now no longer on the approved. This building was built prior to the design criteria that are currently in place. And as an option, if a builder wants to come into this situation, they want to match the existing building even though the new doesn't meet the current design standards, they can do that, but the city council has to approve the modification.
Okay. And then, Mr. Harlecker, there's two entrances, you're saying, off of 90th and then off of 87th Lane?
Yep. There's a main, there's an entrance right here off of 90th that kind of dumps into the front of their building.
Mm-hmm.
And then they've got another access off the 87th, there's a cul-de-sac right here that comes in and kind of services the, the working part of the facility.
Okay, and they're going to add landscaping to both those avenues?
That's a recommendation, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock?
All I want to say is that it's in planning case 19-1 with Green Bay Packaging expansion. It's a very good plan, it's very good for the community, it's a very, I looked over the plans and very thorough, very thoughtful, and it meets the requirements, and as long as all the recommendations from the city planning department is covered in the final vote of the commission, I'm very much in support of this. So, I think it's a, it's a very good proposal being brought forward to the commission, so, thank you.
Thank you. Petitioner like to make their presentation at this time?
If you've got any questions, he's available to...
Well, you said he had, they had a presentation.
Well, answer any questions.
Oh, all right.
You know...
Well, then we'll have the public hearing before we go that route. We do need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 19-1, site plan expansion for Green Bay Packaging at 555-87th Lane. Anyone present wish to speak at the public hearing on this matter? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commission.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock?
In planning case 19-1, I propose that the planning commission move to approve the proposed site plan with the following six stated conditions from the city planning office, or as listed.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Casey, second, or excuse me, a motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I have a few questions for the applicant, if I may?
Sure.
So, in the existing site, there appears to be three overhead lights in your parking lot, presumably you are a three-shift operation, is that correct?
Correct, they run three shifts and I believe six days a week.
Okay, and with the new plan, is there, will there be new lights replaced within that, within the new parking lot?
Correct. The, the existing lighting that's on the site, the poles and fixtures are fairly new, I think they've been replaced within the last few years, so we're going to take those out, save them, reuse them, and then add others as needed for the larger parking lot.
And are those indicated on the current plan that we have in place? I don't think I see them.
I'm not sure if they are. I think, I need to verify with Scott, maybe I didn't provide, we have a photometric drawing that does show all new, all fixtures and the foot candle levels for the entire site, and if we've not provided that, we will do so.
Excellent. And then additionally, with regards to your parking, you're proposing 153 with a max cap, generally speaking of 141 employees on site, that leaves you 12 open parking spaces around there. How many of those will be reserved for visitors and/or off-site folks?
If I remember correctly, we identified, I believe it's a dozen stalls on the site for visitors. I would just add that the 141 figure that we provided is a, is certainly a conservative maximum, and it accounts for all employees that could potentially be there at a shift overlap. Certainly, at any given time, there are some employees who use public transit or carpool or find other means to the site. There's also, on any given day, salespeople who are not typically in the office, so we believe the 141 is a, almost unattainable number, but it accounts for the absolute worst-case scenario.
And you feel that that incorporates the 47,000 square foot expansion of production space, even though it is automated production, you won't be adding additional staff seasonally or otherwise to also accommodate your warehouse?
No, and in fact, the number we provided for parking does include some seasonal and temp employees based on their data, or historical data. So on a, on a typical part of the year, the, I think we said 197 is the current employee count. That's probably already including those temp and seasonal numbers that they experience on a regular year. The additional production line that will be installed does not necessarily add employees. What it allows them to do is maybe increase, like the third shift, to increase the third shift capacity, but it doesn't necessarily require more employees to operate.
All right, and then finally, with, you're adding about 40% to your outbound dock door capacity there, going from 10 to 14 doors on your finished goods warehouse. Are you converting any of those existing dock doors to inbound, or are they, is that just net new?
No, I think, the owner is here and will correct me if I'm misspeaking, but as I understand it, the, the change in their business model is that they have a lot more clients today who order boxes in large quantities, but do not necessarily want to receive those large quantities all at once. So the additional warehouse space allows them to, rather than just make boxes and ship them to customers immediately, it allows them to hold inventory and ship that inventory in small amounts to customers on a more frequent basis. So it doesn't necessarily require any additional inbound raw materials or anything like that, it just allows them to do a better job for their customers of inventory management.
So would you say that the business model is shifting more towards an LTL versus a less-than-load versus truckload model?
Would you like to answer that, John? Sorry.
I'm attempting to understand the volume of traffic that four new dock doors will bring to this site.
Okay. Yeah, I might ask John, who represents the ownership, to come and answer that question.
Hi, John Tow with Green Bay Packaging. Currently, we have more than 10, actually. We've got closer to 21 or 22, so we're adding four more, and it will be outbound. Right now, we've got contract carriers that take 10 or 12 truckloads out, first thing in the morning at 6:00, come back at 10:11, take out another 10 or 12 loads, and it'll increase incrementally, but not at a real rapid rate.
Okay.
So it's all outgoing, but it will be our own trucks, not LTL or, ours is pretty local, we ship within 150 miles, so it's not, we're not going over the road.
And your expansion across the back there, there's a significant amount of trailer storage that you already have. Are you foreseeing all of that trailer support pad being used continuously through the season?
Some of it, part of it with the finished goods expansion. Right now, we've got a lot of finished goods and trailers, and, you know, they're, they're not over-the-road trailers, so they're marked as that, and we will be taking that finished good storage and put it into the new finished goods warehouse space.
So would you say that ideally you would have fewer trailers on your lot than current, except, excepting peak productions?
If it happened tomorrow, yeah. Over, over the next five to 10 years, it will probably grow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I don't want to get overly involved on the parking issue, but I just want to clarify just two things here. So if I recall when I was asking the questions, you, you did indicate that the plan for the parking expansion, if you need it, is already in the plans, correct? Is that what you were showing?
That's correct. Our site plan identified several areas on the site where, you know, the...
Expansion is possible?
Expansion is possible, and the grading is done in a, in a way that that wouldn't be outrageous to add those parking stalls.
Okay.
Certainly, Green Bay Packaging, you know, they've been on that site for several years, they feel confident that their employee numbers are not going to swell into those numbers, but obviously if there was another user at some point down the road that had a more intensive manufacturing or assembly use, there's space there to do the extra parking, yes.
And, Mr. Harlecker, if they do expand, did they have to come back in front of the planning commission for that, or is that all bundled in?
It's bundled in with this...
It would be bundled in.
They'd have to come in for a site plan and go through the building permit review, but not planning commission.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we do have the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission, and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if anyone chooses to do so, with the condition that the city council has to approve the exterior materials. All right, our second case under new business is planning case 19-4, preliminary plat for Port Evergreen Apartments, Springbrook Drive and 94th, real estate equities. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, the applicant is proposing a plat and a site plan for 184-unit apartment building. The site is 4.68 acres, it's located on the southwest quadrant of Highway 610 and 47 with access from Springbrook off of Coon Rapids Boulevard and 94th coming in from the west. It's this site right here. Pleasure Creek forms the southern boundary of the property. This is the plat, they're taking it and just plating it into one lot. That allows the appropriate easements to be put in place, as well as it dedicates right-of-way for Springbrook Drive. This is the site plan, Springbrook Drive coming in this way, Pleasure Creek is here, the driveway coming in right in through here. This is the apartment here, it's, it's a four-story apartment building. Underground parking is accessed here and, and here. The main entrance and common area of the facility is located here. The density of, the proposed density of the project is 41 units per acre. They're proposing 270 parking spaces, that equates to about 1.46 spaces per unit. As part of the project, the applicant is requesting use flexibility for density. The current density allowed in the port districts is 30, they're proposing 41.7. They are also asking design flexibility for parking. They have a total of 270 spaces. Code requires 414. They're also requesting design flexibility for the setback from Flintwood right-of-way here. Code requires a maximum setback of 20 feet from Springbrook right-of-way. They are proposing 30-foot setback from Springbrook Drive. They did have a traffic study done as part of this project. The traffic study came up with a total of 1,000 trips daily, with about half of them going down Springbrook Drive directly to Coon Rapids Boulevard, and the other half going down 94th and then entering Coon Rapids Boulevard at the intersection here. Generally equates those, the traffic going westbound on Coon Rapids Boulevard will enter the Boulevard here, and those that are going east will go down Springbrook Drive. During the morning peak, generate about 66 trips, and during the evening peak, about This is the, the grading plan. They are proposing a pond down in this area here, and then swale taking water back to a low area on the rear of the site. And this is Coon Creek, right here. If you go back to the site plan for a minute, they are proposing a trail around the pond and along Pleasure Creek, as well as a dog park here, tot lot here, and recreation area in this area here. Landscaping, the code requires 34, or 23 overstory trees and 23 evergreen trees. The larger ever, overstory trees are primarily around the perimeter here, they're the larger circles here and here. The evergreens are the smaller darker trees spaced along there, back in here. They are proposing, they've got shrubs showing around the perimeter of the building, as well as along the drive aisle. The applicant will have to provide detailed planting plans for the shrubs. 23 overstory trees are required, the applicant's plan has 34, and the 23 evergreen trees are required, the plan has 27. Plan does include, require 66 ornamental trees. They don't have any shown on the plan, so they have to provide for those, as well as the 266 shrubs that are required. One area that could be looked at is try to enhance the area between the creek and the area in the, around the pond here. That's an area that we would look at as providing a little increased landscaping down and through here, and maybe possibly along this property line here to help screen it from the traffic on 47. Park dedication, an amount of $1,360 per unit is required. These are the building elevations. It's a mix of cement board siding, face brick, and stone elevation. Can't have it. This is the inside of, of the building. This elevation corresponds with this wall here. You can see this is the entrance. They are proposing rooftop decks on, over the patio area, which is here. This is the main entrance into the facility, so this is the area on the south end, this is the area on the north end. The bump outs on the sides of the building along here correspond with these features These are the elevations for 301. So I believe this is the east side of the building, and this is the end, and this is the inside corner that would correspond with this elevation here, here, and here. 302, this would be the outside elevations on the north wall and on the west wall. Here and here. This is the, the side facing Coon Rapids Boulevard, or Coon Rapids Boulevard, Highway 47. Again, they do carry out the, the mix of materials and the bricks in the building around all the sides. And this is the elevation that you would see as you come in from Springbrook. This is the, the wall there, this is the inside, and this is the end of the building, so all the features are carried on all the way around all sides of the building. And this is kind of a general layout, this is the first floor with the common area here... This is the first floor with the common area here, the lobby and a common area and then patio out here and then office space. I believe there's about forty-six, they can correct me, about forty-six units per floor, I think on their plans. This is a layout for the second. You can see this is the designated areas for the rooftop patios. And then these are the third and fourth floors. There's no connection between the two. You'd have to go down to the second to get from one to the other or go down and use the, if you're on the first floor, you go down and use the elevators to go up. With that, staff will answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience also and he has a formal presentation to give. Their traffic engineer is also here to answer traffic-related questions. And if you'd like, turn it over to them unless you've got more questions of me.
Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker before we have the presentation from the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So I was looking at, Mr. Harlecker, I was looking at some of the designs and it looked to me on a couple of them that the dog run on that west side is one area and then the play area is another, but they were reversed on one of the other drawings. And I just wondered which is which? And then I was wondering about the dimensions for those.
I'll let the applicant speak to that. There might have been an error in the drawing.
Yeah.
Confirm exactly which one will be which.
Okay. Thank you.
Commission, any other questions?
Chair Schwartz, I have a question.
Commissioner, no luck.
We're addressing nineteen dash four or we...
We're doing...
Both.
We're discussing both, but we'll be handling them individually when it comes times for motions.
Okay, because the four is the preliminary plat and then nineteen dash five is preliminary and final site plan, right?
Correct. We're discussing both right at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bradley.
Mr. Harlecker, you indicated that they wanted some flexibility with parking. The numbers went by kind of fast for me, but I think you indicated the required parking for this under code would have been two hundred and seventy spots?
They're proposing two hundred and seventy and the requirement is four hundred and fourteen.
Four hundred and fourteen.
They're proposing a hundred and seventy-two underground and ninety-eight surface.
So there's a substantial deficiency or deviation from code in parking?
Correct. Code requires two point two-five spaces per unit. They're proposing one point six.
In my review of the site plan, there doesn't appear to be any room for any future parking if it is necessary, is it?
That's correct.
Okay. And you also mentioned then an issue with density?
Correct. The maximum density allowed in the Port District at this point is thirty units per acre. They're proposing, I believe it's forty-one units per acre.
Okay. That's all I have at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Geiser.
So, Mr. Harlecker, if I may restate to be very succinct there, they're proposing to have an, asking for a deviation to make the area denser with less parking than what city code recommends. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
For a comparison, looked at the density of a couple other recent projects, apartment projects. The proposed apartment complex at Patterson Floral, that came in at forty-seven point seven units per acre. River North was thirty-five units per acre and Sherman came in at about thirty point eight. North Star Station project came in at thirty point eight. For a comparison with parking, the other apartment on the Boulevard, Patterson Floral, came in with one point two-three units or spaces per unit.
Commissioner Geiser.
The Patterson Floral site was, is that in progress currently or was that...
It was approved, but it's not yet under construction.
And, Commissioner, any other questions before we hear from the petitioner?
Chair Schwartz, I have a question for Mr. Harlecker.
Commissioner, no luck.
Could you give us a brief overview of this parcel of land which, like in a preamble or a little history of this, how long this plot has been barren or unused?
It has been vacant, I assume, forever. It hasn't been developed at all. Gahn Company has owned it for at least ten years, twelve years. And they did get approval for a larger facility that incorporated some of the adjacent parcels about eight years ago. For a mixed senior and market rate unit, that project never got developed. So it's been vacant for quite some time.
I have one more question from Mr. Harlecker. The comparison for Twin City parking comps on the last page, second or the page just before the city engineers, engineering comments. Mississippi View Apartments in Coon Rapids had a parking ratio of point five units per stall. Is that actually, whereas the other ones draw a more twin cities, about one and a half is the standard, ours is a little, standard is a little higher, that two and a half? Is that correct?
That. I misunderstood. What's the question?
Oh, the question is, is that a valid, is that the nearest valid example in Coon Rapids of the parking ratio that's listed on your, like the Mississippi View Apartments in Coon Rapids?
Yeah, that's what the applicant pulled that out. The ones that I talked about, they're really, the most, one that's, you know, recent is the Patterson Floral parking requirement which came in at one point two-three. That was a newer facility along the Boulevard. That's why I used that one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmucke.
I'm looking through the list of the conditions and this is an unusually long list of conditions compared to other site plans that we've seen of late. I'm just wondering why more of this wasn't already in the site plan? It just seems like there's just quite a few things on the list as opposed to, unless it's just duplication, I missed that. Like the fence, I guess the privacy fence being installed along the west property line. I don't remember you talking about that and so forth, but...
All right, I can, I can go over those.
Okay.
Among this property line here, these are the back lots of these three lots here. Kind of correspond with this stretch here. And there's a retaining wall along here. At this point end, it's about nine feet high, drops off rather quickly to three or four feet in here and then drops out altogether. There should be a privacy fence installed from here all the way down to Springbrook to help screen the neighbors' properties and to protect, kind of a safety feature for that retaining wall also. The sidewalk along Springbrook Drive, the applicant will, the requirement is that they construct a sidewalk down their property line to the southern boundary here on the other side of Springbrook. The city will then be responsible for extending that sidewalk some point in the future down to Coon Rapids Boulevard. They have this one on this side. It's got some stairs involved, so it's not handicap accessible. So they put one over here that does meet handicap accessibility with a crossing here and then they can continue down the rest of the way. Ornamental trees, shrubs, landscaping, overstory trees. There is a city requirement for overstory trees, forty feet on center along, there is, this stretch here. City code requires that. Bicycle storage. They've got bicycle racks out front and there are places availability in the corners of the underground parking space that they can designate for bicycle parking.
Mr. Harlecker, how tall is that privacy fence? And it doesn't sit on top of the retaining wall, it sits adjacent to it, correct?
It would sit back from the retaining wall. Maximum height allowed by code is seven feet.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner, we ready to hear from the petitioner?
Yes.
Petitioner, please come up and make their presentation, please.
Hello, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, how are you? I'm Alex Bazanz. I'm a development partner with Real Estate Equities. This is Patrick Ostrom. He's also a development partner with Real Estate Equities. So we're here to, you know, give you a background description of the project that we're proposing. I think before we get into the slideshow, I just kind of want to give you a little background on, you know, just some general rational reasons that we think affordable workforce housing is an important thing for the community and a thing for the site. You know, this location, it was just discussed, a little bit of the site's been vacant land obviously since the inception of, you know, Coon Rapids. We think it's a very well-located site for housing particularly. You know, it's located directly at, you know, Highway forty-seven and six-ten. So it has great visibility, which for us as, you know, housing owners and operators and developers, is one of the key kind of important things that we look for for a site where we are going to develop housing. So that's one aspect to it. You know, two is, you know, not just the Coon Rapids, but across the board throughout the Twin Cities, workforce housing is critically in demand, more so than ever with, you know, wage disparity and just the need for quality, you know, affordable workforce housing. It's a scarcity throughout the Twin Cities and frankly throughout the country. And it's just something that, you know, we believe is a great use for the site and important for the community of Coon Rapids. The sites, the project's also going to help activate that location again at Highway forty-seven and six-ten, which, you know, should help fuel an additional hundred and eighty-four households to the community there, which in turn should help, you know, fuel some of the economic growth in the area, will help some of the retail that's there, bringing more households in that'll, you know, enhance some of the consumer spending in the area. So I think that's another important thing to point out for the project is that'll definitely, you know, help the nearby retail and business community. It'll also provide workforce housing for the local employers. One, namely, the new Alina call center that's coming in that's going to, I think, add five hundred employees to the community, I think. You know, this, this quality housing will be a good, potentially an asset for, you know, that type of employment base. So I just kind of wanted to start there to give you a little overview. Next, I'm going to go through our presentation here for you. So a little background on Real Estate Equity, so our company's been around since nineteen seventy-two. We're in residential, residential property management, ownership and development. We're based out of St. Paul and we currently have assets in Minnesota, Wisconsin, in Indiana with the primarily base of assets that we own and manage in Minnesota. You know, we're a company that, you know, is family-owned. Again, we've been around since nineteen seventy-two. We've done over seventy projects through our company's history throughout primarily the Midwest. You know, currently today, we have almost twelve thousand units under construction or in the development planning process. And the majority of that construction that we're doing is workforce and senior affordable housing. So that's just something we're committed to and it's kind of our core business. You know, another important aspect to point out for us as Real Estate Equities, as the owner and operator of this property, is that we are going to own and operate this for a minimum of twenty years. So it's not, we're not coming in to build something and leave. We're long-term owners of properties. This just gives you, again, you guys just kind of looked at a bunch of pictures. This is a colored site plan of the layout of the building. You know, the unit mix is eighty one-bedrooms, seventy-two two-bedrooms that have two bathrooms, and then thirty-two three-bedrooms with two bathrooms. The parking ratio, which you just went kind of through, is a one-point-five ratio. I believe it's one point four-six to be exact, with a total of two hundred and seventy stalls, one hundred and seventy-two underground parking stalls and then ninety-eight surface stalls. We're also going to have six spots at the main entryway for bike parking as well as bicycle storage that'll actually be in the underground garage. Unit amenities, this rendering here is an example of the finished levels for the units. It's of another project we recently completed called the Press House in downtown St. Paul. Unit amenities, we're going to have washer and dryers in the units, solid surface counters, nine-foot ceiling height. We'll have a full stainless steel appliance package. We use low-flow fixtures, LED lighting and high-efficiency HVAC. The building's going to have two elevators. It'll also have dedicated move-in areas as well as secure entries. Oh, one other thing to mention that you better is that we, we are, we are looking at doing solar panels on the rooftops and are almost certain we're going to do that. So that's something that is another green aspect to the project that we are pretty confident that we're going to do, so. Community amenities, we've got a four-person onsite management team. We have a secure resident entrance lobby that's going to have a lugzer dedicated package system. We have a community room with, we also have an outdoor patio with a fire pit and a bocce ball court, fitness center, tot lot and dog run. We're also going to have, again, a play area as well out there, office and conference room as well as dedicated underground parking. Again, Scott went through these, but this is just an example of the elevations. The primary exterior materials are masonry, Energy Star windows, CFB which is concrete fiberboard, wood look, CFB, and then metal panel accents. That's just the, that's the perspective rendering from Highway forty-seven and Highway six-ten to give you an example of what the building's going to look like from that angle. And again, that's from the Port Evergreen side. So that gives you a look of the building. You can see the, kind of the center, you know, front entryway to the building as well from that angle, a little bit better maybe. Yeah, so we put together two tables. You know, the two major things that I think we're addressing here among a few things are density and parking. So what this is right here, this is a density comparison of other newer affordable, new, I should say, in the last few years, affordable housing projects throughout the Twin Cities. So what this does is just kind of lists out the names of the projects, the locations, the type of housing, the number of units. And then it also shows the site size per acreage as well as the number of units per acre. And I think what you'll see just kind of looking at these, and again, these are newer projects similar in scale to this project, is that, you know, our project is, you know, is pretty much in comparison to these other ones, if not on the lower end, in terms of density. So, you know, the current zoning accommodates, I think, thirty units per acre per the density. We're looking to do forty, I believe forty-one point six is the exact number that Scott had calculated. But this just gives you a good example of other projects throughout the Twin Cities and kind of what their, you know, density is. So I think this comparison provides a pretty strong case for what other developers are doing for new construction. And one of the things just to point out for, you know, these affordable housing projects is, you know, they're complex, they're not easy to put together and they need to be high-density to make them work or they just economically and financially don't work. So when you see this chart, you know, that's the main reason really driving that is you really have to do... really have to do a fairly high-density project to be able to actually do these projects, so. And then this is an actual parking comparison, so what we did was we looked at Coon Rapids and kinda broke down five other projects, as well as our project, so I'll probably go into that first. So when you look at this, we list out, again, the names of the projects, those are all in Coon Rapids, the number of units, the number of parking stalls, now that includes surface garage or underground garage parking, and then the parking per unit. And in doing this research, and these properties, mind you, you know, are, I believe, all market-rate properties, and some are, you know, seventies, eighties-built properties, so they vary a little bit between underground parking and garage parking. But ours is definitely on the, you know, on the higher end parking-wise, I mean, we're, Woodland North is slightly higher, we're significantly higher than Garden Oaks Apartments, you know, and we're basically at where Crest Oak Apartments and Meadows of Coon Rapids is. And one that's not on here that Scott had pointed out obviously is the newer project, which is, I think it's called Harrison Floral, Peterson Floral, I'm sorry, excuse me, which is a considerably lower parking ratio. So that, those comps are specific to Coon Rapids, that we wanted to kinda lay out to show you guys. The next one just kinda shows an example of other metro area properties, and that one is a little more, I think, reflective of what we're building, because those are frankly all newer construction projects that have been built within the last few years. So when you look through those, you know, those are, with the exception of a couple that are in St. Paul, you know, suburban-located properties, similar in density, and when you compare parking per unit ratios on this, you know, you'll see that ours is definitely on the higher end parking per unit ratio than some of the other newer projects that are getting built today. So that provides you kinda the overview of the parking comparison, so I think, next slide. And then we're open for questions, so.
Commissioner, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So I'll go back to the, that, that privacy fence, or I guess the dog area?
Sure.
Pet exercise area, and then there's, looks like it's mapped up to be an activity area, play area?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then there's a little tot lot, too. So tell me the different, give me some dimensions and tell me the, what's in the, what's in the tot lot, what's in the play area, what are your plans?
Yeah, you can speak to this, Phil.
Yeah, good evening, again, Patrick Ostrom. So the tot lot is more of a fixed playset that you would see for younger kids, like kind of a climbing playground area. The dog run is a green field, I guess, for people to bring their dogs to get them outside for a little bit, and then the recreational area was meant to be more of just a green space for people to play catch or kick around a soccer ball, be outside and just have a little green space. The dog run would is intended to be the further one, back closer to Highway six-ten, so you could get to the more recreational green space quicker, I guess, easier. And they're about, those spaces are about twenty by seventy right now currently, so the two dog run and recreational spaces.
So pretty much that activity area is, is a blank slate, you're gonna let people do what they will, there's no benches, there's no...
Yeah, there will be some benches on the, on the south end, on the trails around the rain garden and Pleasure Creek, we intend to put some benches down there as well. And then, yeah, that space is more active green space, and with the exception of the tot lot, which is a programmed playground area that would be installed as well.
With some equipment and that kinda thing?
Yep.
Okay, then what size of privacy fence are you looking at for that westernmost section on the backside of the Flintwood lots? What, Mr. Harlecker said...
I believe you said seven feet is code, right?
Seven feet is the max, your typical, probably vinyl privacy fence.
Six to eight feet range in code.
Code's a seven, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So you brought up solar panels as a maybe versus a commit, I guess I would like to understand your level of intent for green, you've got some, some good piece here around LED lighting, what else are you, are you, how far are you on that?
Yeah, so the solar, we have, on another recent project, we vetted very thoroughly, and we're, we're fairly committed to doing it here. You know, we still have some work to do as far as structural design and things like that, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet, but we fully intend on doing that at this project as far as solar goes. Outside of that, we will be meeting Energy Star and Minnesota Green Community requirements. It will be financed with the four-percent tax credits through MHFA, so they have very stringent, exceeding just base energy code when it comes to Minnesota Green Communities and Energy Star, so high-efficiency and energy, all Energy Star appliances, LED lighting, low-flow fixtures, like we said before, high-efficiency Energy Star magic packs in each unit for heating and cooling systems, occupancy sensors on the lights in the garage and corridors, so they usually dim down and go every other if there's not people actively walking through that space in the evening, and kinda still light there for safety purposes, but to kinda dim it down and save on energy costs that way as well, are some of those examples.
If you were to implement that, would you use that to offset the rate residents would be incurring, or would you use that just to offset total building operation?
It would likely be building operations, you can't get enough solar panels on the roof to, you know, generate enough power for the whole building, and frankly, doesn't generate it for all the common areas either, so. Usually when we construct these, we end up having kinda one house panel, and then some metered out to the, out to the residence for electricity, so that solar would just back into the, into the main house panel essentially.
Okay. And then as far as you mentioned secured entries, can you describe how you're securing your entries, is it card reader?
Yeah, both card reader, cameras at, we usually go pretty overboard on our cameras, both to protect the residents, but also protect the building within. So there'd be cameras at every entrance and in the common areas, card readers, call boxes, and, you know, onsite staff at forty hours a week as well, too, so.
Okay. And then shifting to parking, is the underground parking an additional fee for residents, or is that free and open?
It is an additional fee, and we, we don't have one-to-one underground, so it's a little difficult to just hand them out for free, so we do, we do charge additional for those.
So with that, am I understanding that there are ninety-eight surface lots that are free, but a hundred-and-seventy-two that are paid parking, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then with that, are you planning on installing, since you're going green, any electrical charging units anywhere, either underground, surface, or anywhere for vehicles?
You know, I guess we haven't discussed that, I don't, I'm looking at my architect's area, that hasn't been, hasn't been discussed at this point, we haven't recently, we haven't seen that in our other developments, especially on the affordable workforce housing side either being much of a demand, so. And that's another thing I do wanna point out, you know, a lot of the parking ratios that have been discussed typically on the affordable housing projects, you don't see as many just cars in general. On a market-rate project, if you have a two-bedroom apartment with two residents, you're likely gonna see two cars. On a two-bedroom in an affordable housing, it's typically, you know, a family, there may be one car for that two-bedroom unit even, so. A little bit lower of a parking ratio is very sufficient for these affordable housing projects that we, that we develop, so.
Chair, your answer.
Is there any questions at this time?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Nabok.
Just thank you for answering, that's half of my question to the applicant, for outlining the parking ratio demand, because of the clients, the workforce apartments, there's a slightly less volume and demand for parking spaces. So part of that question I had was, part of the recommendation and the engineering comments and such, this is a very tight parcel of land with a lot of requirements and, and everything needs to fit just right in there. Is it feasible that you're gonna be able to get sixty-six ornamental trees and two-hundred-and-sixty-six shrubs into this site plan?
I believe that's already called out, PJ's our civil engineer here and doing the landscaping design, so.
Yeah?
Yep.
Yeah, we should probably introduce our team quick, too, by the way.
All right.
PJ Dish with Lawson Associates, he's the civil engineer, Dave Mark and Petro Meggitts with Coswellson, the architects, and Max Moreland is the traffic engineer with SPAC, who did the traffic study as well, so.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Bradley.
With regard to some of the examples you set out for high-density, especially like St. Paul, and with the very low parking ratios, isn't it true that those are in areas that are with immediate access to mass transit, probably right along the light rail?
I think we had two that were in St. Paul.
Yeah, most of the, most of the properties were not in St. Paul, most of them were in suburban locations.
I know, but the highest ones, I think of your examples, were in St. Paul.
So the Cambreak, yes, that is in St. Paul, that's on East Seventh Street, not next to the light rail, but yes, there is higher transportation. The Legends of Silver Lake is in St. Anthony. Landings of Lexington and Lexington, Legends of Cottage Grove is pretty tucked back up in Cottage Grove, so it's, it's a mix. I mean frankly, yeah, the ones in St. Paul admittedly do have access to higher transportation, which would be expected, but the other ones in some more suburban locations are not far off of this type of location.
Has there been any kind of study to see what kind of mass transit's available for this site?
Other than there's an express bus stop down on Coon Rapids Boulevard, which isn't too far away, and the buses that...
North Town.
The North Town, yeah, the ones, the routes along that, that's what I'm aware of at this point, but.
One, oh, sorry, excuse me. One thing I would mention, too, just per the study that Max did, you know, it kinda highlights peak hours and kinda peak demand basically for parking at the property, and what it shows is that, you know, medium-density, you know, residential, I think it's between like one-point-two-two and one-point-two-eight stalls per unit, which, you know, is considerably lower than kinda where we're at in terms of our overall parking, so. One of the things that makes us pretty comfortable with seeing that study is kinda going over all the data and seeing, you know, at the peak hours when we're at full occupancy, that, you know, we're still well below the parking ratio that we're gonna actually have at the property. So frankly, in getting the traffic study done, it made us, you know, even more comfortable with the parking ratio.
Based on your review of the site plan, it's a fairly tight parcel that you're putting this all into, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's no way you can work in any reserved area for possibly parking expansion, if it is deemed necessary?
Without, not at this point, without losing building footprint, and if we lose units, it starts to make the project less feasible financially, so there's just not a lot of additional space on the site.
Nothing further? You intend to draw families to this facility or this building?
Yeah.
Your two tot lots, you got a tot lot there basically behind the entryway, and then you got the one down, down the side on the west side. What, what age group are these lots designed for?
The tot lot is usually a, more of a toddler age group.
A playground.
A playground, right, and then the other green space would be expected a higher, or an older age group, I don't know that there's an age group specifically identified, but it's more active sport type of a green space area.
So the two lots that you've got designated on your site are specifically tot lots?
The one we have is specifically a tot lot, I believe.
The other one's more of a smaller outdoor playing field, that's recreational, that, you know, you could play catch with your dad, or you could throw football around, or, it's just another outdoor space for people to be active in.
Because I'm somewhat concerned that this entire general area, the city has no, has no residential parks for, for kids to go to in this area. I just can't see how you can be attracting families into this area when there's no place for, for the kids to go to play.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, we do have some spaces called out, it's not, we don't expect it to be a hundred percent families, I mean, we're looking at it as a workforce. There are some bigger units, but it's heavier on the one- and two-bedroom size, so we don't expect it to be overwhelming families necessarily. But I think the draw is the, is again, the affordability, the rent levels for some of those larger units compared to a three-bedroom, that's not an affordable property, there just aren't any other options out there for, at that price point, and of the, the finish level of the building and unit itself.
And as far as your amenities, do you have like outdoor barbecue grills anywhere?
Yeah, we have an outdoor patio, we usually do a fire pit, seating area, outdoor grills, we are proposing a, on the one-level entry space, a rooftop deck on top of that first level as well.
Is that available from the backside then, too, that would, the rooftop deck, that doesn't, that's just for the front of the building? Is that right? Or did I infer that it's available on the backside?
Does that span the whole rooftop?
Yep.
Yeah?
Right about the entrance.
Yeah, so in this one level, first level here, that would span across the whole roof.
Site plan real quick. So basically, this area right here, sorry, Petro Meggitts, Coswellson Architects, once again, thank you. So this area being the one-story element that connects the two wings, there would be a rooftop deck that you'd be able to see on both sides of the building, so you'd be able to see everything as you stand up there.
Okay, so there's some access from that backside, you're saying?
Yes.
And that's a two-level, right?
Level and a half, it's a little taller than...
Okay, just elevated ceilings, all right.
So all residents are gonna have access to it?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bradley. I'm sorry, guys, I forgot to ask before, are any of these units designed or designated for handicap?
Yeah, five percent of the units are full ADA, as required by the, some of the financing, and then all of the units are, need to be adaptable, so at a reasonable request, if there were somebody who were disabled, they can be made accessible.
Thank you. Nothing further? Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Don't have it on this presentation here, but on elevation three-hundred, level three, and on elevation three-oh-two, item one, there's effectively, everywhere on this, on your layout here, you have no more than two windows wide of any aesthetic that's broke, it's all broken up pretty well. But on those two pieces, the one interior to the parking lot, there's a four-by-four section with nothing, just a flat gray wall, and then on the other side towards the other lots, which granted, there'll be a privacy fence, speaking with Mr. Harlecker there, but that's another four-by-four section, five-by-four and a four-by-four section of just flat gray space. Is there anything you could do to break that up a little bit? The elevations were called out in Mr. Harlecker's presentation, if you'd like to see those...
Yeah, oh, he's, okay, we can go back, I've got that, so.
Yeah, so, so elevation three-hundred, number three, so I believe it's the next one.
Yeah, oh, the next one?
Yeah, so right there, that, that top one, that's pretty large, it's a five-by-four block of gray that all the folks on the other side of the parking lot are gonna be staring at, and then if you pull up elevation three-oh-two, there is that four-by-four section on the top picture there, which is not broken up.
Are you referring to this area here?
Yes.
Okay, around the windows, okay, so, yeah. Yeah, we could look at doing some other exterior feature or element to help.
Just from an exterior feature perspective, everywhere else on the design, you have no more than two windows together without a breakup, and then there's just these two gray slabs.
Yeah, and I don't wanna, maybe there was a reason for that, but, okay, yeah, we can look at, and something to help, help break that up a little bit.
Yeah, you've got a great aesthetic, I think it's just those two kinda stuck out, jumped out at me as, what's go, why, nothing.
Yep.
And then, if I may, on the landscape plan, you know, you have quite a bit of deciduous trees along forty-seven there, however... However, the 610 off-ramp that will point, that's right across the way, that's going to point headlights right at your building. Especially towards the north end of that building. You know, you do, looks, according to code, you do have some leeway to switch towards some coniferous there. You know, I, I think I'd like to see a little more of a privacy sound screen year-round, in whether you want to space that out or some extent, to get a little bit more of a screening from the traffic coming off of 610 pointed straight at that building. From a light perspective and then from a sound perspective, just a active barrier, I think would be a, a nice amenity for those folks, especially on the ground floor.
Yeah.
To, to have, because they're, I mean, as, as we've mentioned, it's a tight parcel. You're not far from the roadway there. So...
Yeah, no, that's good. I mean, we are in line with you there. We want to make sure we've got screening from the highway, so.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, any other questions for petitioners at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Casey?
I will address that you have four staircases that run through your buildings. I, I saw them labeled A, B, C, D. Are those secure entries in and out also, or does everyone come in that front entry?
No, those would be secured as well. So, if people are parking, you know, down, I guess, over here, and they live in this building, there'd be a, you'd have to have a key, be a resident with a fob to be able to get in there. There won't be call boxes, so if you have a visitor coming, they would have to go to the front door and call your unit. But, yeah, those people who live on that wing of the building would be able to get in, so they don't have to go walk all the way back around.
I know I have more questions. For now, that's, that's it, thank you.
Sure.
All right, we may have more questions for you here as we go.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And... Question for legal, we can have one public hearing for, for both cases?
I think you can have one public hearing for both cases.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I will open a public hearing in both planning case 19-4, the preliminary plat, and planning case 19-5, the final site plan for the 184-unit apartment building at Springbrook Drive and 94th Avenue. Anyone present who wish to speak at the public hearing, please come to the microphone, give your name and your address. Limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Brendan McShane. I live at 20194th Avenue Northwest, the closest adjoining property. I have some handouts I'd like to provide to the commission, if that's all right?
All right.
So, I'm here today on behalf of myself, being the closest adjoining property owner and the majority of the neighborhood. There are 19 homes in the neighborhood, and I think I have eight or nine of them represented here today. Well, I would just like to say that I, I do not believe that this development fits the Port Development, Port Evergreen redevelopment plan for a number of reasons. Besides the parking and the density requirement exceedances, it does not meet the goals and intent of the Port Evergreen development overall. I'd like to bring you to figure three, it's that third page there in the back, just to kind of give a better lay of the land of where this really sits in to myself and the other property owners. It, it'll be large, and it will be pretty much on top of us. The room for a privacy fence is, is going to be on, on the matter of inches, maybe 18 or 24 inches. There will not be room for trees coming in and out. I noticed they're rendering, kind of missed that southern parking garage entry, which also has about an 8% grade to it. So, if you're coming out of that parking garage entry, your headlights will be shining right at my second floor. So, on top of that, the, the parking, I mean, this, there, there isn't very good mass transit in Coon Rapids in this neighborhood. There, there's not a sidewalk that brings you all the way to Coon Rapids Boulevard. Realize there's one proposed to do that. But I think there's a single bus stop, and I wouldn't say it's got very good availability. So, 1.5 units of parking, less than 1.5 units of parking per unit, when some of these units are two and three-bedroom units, it's really going to be pushing. And that burden is going to fall on us, the surrounding homeowners. And I, I feel that that will be an undue burden. The street is, based on the traffic impact, impact study, it will have capacity, but it, it will be an, an excessive burden on us. Furthermore, for the design, dimensional design and use standards flexibility requirements will result in better integration, for the dimensional flexibility to, for the city council to approve modification, they will need better integration of uses or additional public amenities that will further intend to this section. I don't believe they're meeting the intent of this section to begin with, and they're not providing better integration of uses. This is one single multifamily use. For developments of this size, 50 units or larger, for the city ordinance, they want more than one use. For 50 units, and we're looking at 184. So, they're missing out on adding public amenities, and they're missing out on, for the design flex, the design standard flexibility, the same thing. For the use flexibility, the requirements are a little bit more exacting. There's three requirements, including that it significantly advances the intent, the intent of this section. I would argue that it does not. Modification is necessary in terms of the density exceedances and the parking requirements, that the modification is necessary to develop the property in an efficient, well-organized way. Believe that would be true. And the third one, the plan provides significant site amenities, buffers, and other elements to offset potential harmful effects that could be caused by the use implying to the surrounding community. And that would be us, and I do not believe that this quite fits that goal. If you look at the bottom of that second page, you'll see the distance to the adjoining property line, it would be my property line and my adjoining house. This, this will be very close to my development. Additionally, this development's going to require $1.4 million in tax increment financing, paid, I'm not an expert in this, but paid through the city in some sort to get this development off the ground. So, for them to be requiring, requesting 1.4 million in financing and still not providing public amenities, buffers, open spaces, I mean, it, it's just missing the mark. I'm open to questions?
We have no questions for you at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing?
My name's Kim Will, and I'm the second closest house. Everything that Brendan said, I agree with. My other, my main concern is you had brought up the families that would move in there with the kids. Currently on the street, if people start parking on the street, it, it narrows the street down quite a bit. And I just worry that kids that are walking or just kind of going along the streets, riding bikes off of the property, with now, it's usually about 50 cars that come by to, I think, 500? Yeah, that, you have younger kids, you know, 10 or so, even to 18 or anybody, that with the smaller streets with cars parked on both sides of the street, it becomes dangerous. And I do worry about kids, especially in the summer, riding bikes, cars are coming, you know, both ways. To me, it's, I would love to see something put back there, but just, this is just too big. Every available space is just, they've just crammed this huge project into this little space, and our neighborhood isn't that big. You know, it's a small neighborhood, you know, kind of in this highway, 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 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The nearest park is over a mile away, and you have to go down Coon Rapids Boulevard and around the corner. The elementary school, there is no direct route to it. You either have to go around North Town Mall, or you have to go under 610 and go around. The high school, you would have to go down Coon Rapids Boulevard, and I think that's about a mile and a half. There's, the library is over a mile. There's nothing for younger, for kids to do. There really isn't. To get to other more populated places where friends would live, you pretty much have to go a mile on Coon Rapids Boulevard either direction to get to other populated spots where other kids would be. I know there are kids in the neighborhood right now, but they have, there's not a lot, and they do have their entire yards. The housing, the yards are very large plots, but even they still have the same, you know, problem that if they want to go to a friend's or park, the library, to school, there has to be, there's no buses. Somebody has to drive them. And if somebody has to drive them, that means a family with a mom, dad, and a kid, or two parents and a child, if one parent, if both parents are working, you know, one parent's, like with my husband, when my daughter was growing up in apartments, we had to have two cars. You know, I had to take care of my, during the day when I was with my daughter, he would be at work, but I would still need the vehicle to get myself to work to drop her off to school. So, saying, you know, one parking spot that, I don't, just be, you know, just because you're poor doesn't mean you don't have two cars. You know, lower-income people, we can still afford cars. We just, we just bought this house in December. Before that, we were living in Minneapolis in a low-income rental. I've grown up in, you know, the poorer communities in apartments, raised my daughter in some of them. Poor people have more than one car. And I actually found that kind of offensive, that low-income families would only have one car. That's just, they were older cars, they weren't the best, but we, you know, and in Coon Rapids, if you don't have a car, the transportation, if you can't walk to it, you have to call somebody. Almost everyone that I know that, because I raised my daughter in Coon Rapids for six years in an apartment, and we were all poor, but we all had one or two cars. So, and the, yeah, so I just, that's, I was, Brendan was speaking for us, but that just kind of made me feel like, hey, you know, I, we grew up poor, but we, we managed, you know, food on the table, but yeah, we had to have two cars. And when you live out here in Coon Rapids, the transportation isn't good. The transportation hub that's right down Coon Rapids Boulevard, off the highway, Coon Rapids Boulevard only has that one bus that goes by every hour. You know, so it's, not a public speaker, sorry. But I just, you know, as a mom raising my daughter in apartments, I know that once that tot lot gets bored, I don't know if any of you have kids, but when kids get bored, they get into mischief. They always seem to just, you know, find something else to do. And I would like something back there, some affordable housing, maybe like a 40-unit that has more parking, you know, bigger space and stuff. That would be great back there, but this is just for, when it comes to kids and teenagers, there's just nothing for them to do here. I mean, you, you got to walk, walk, you know, and even the friends aren't going to be, like, a mile away in almost every direction. So, I just wanted to point that out. As a parent, I wouldn't have moved in there with my daughter.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing?
Hi, my name is Paul. I am Kim's husband. And in addition to what I've heard, there are four concerns that I have. One, one, one entrance in and out, if there are any emergency vehicles, that can be a logjam. There are three emergency exits from the building, only three. If any, again, if anything happens, we could lose people. There is an underground ramp, or an underground parking. But what security is going to be there for people going to and from their vehicles? The last one was, again, with the underground parking. The underground parking costs money. How much does it cost to park on the street? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing?
Good afternoon. My name's Terry Farkas. I live on 9412 Flintwood Street. And I was listening to the people talking about having their friends come over to visit them. With the amount of parking, where are they going to park, is my question? Because if all the apartments are full, they, everything is, everything, everything else is full. So, these people are going to have to come down to my block, park in front of my house, and I don't feel that, that that's going to be, that can be done. In Coon, in Coon Rapids, you cannot park your vehicle overnight in the winter. So, where are they going to park their cars when, when the snow falls? That's another question I have. And so, I think it's not very good planning, as far as I'm concerned. I agree with my neighbors, yes, something should be back there, affordable housing, townhouses, something like that could go back there and still be good for the neighborhood, good for money coming into Coon Rapids. But this apartment is not a good thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Last call, anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner?
Chair, questions?
Commissioner Nalblock?
I have four questions for Mr. Harlick. You ready? Question number one. Number one, the city owns a parcel of land in the neighborhood. Is there foreseeable potential of that being developed as a green park area? Or is that a city council question?
That's more of a city council question.
All right, that's, that's a legitimate answer.
Designate that a park.
Number two, for clarification for everyone, could you reiterate, what is the zoning in that neighborhood for the Port District? What classification?
It's zoned port. The master plan has it designated as residential, and I believe the land use designation is mixed use.
All right. Answers my question. Number three, what is the capability or timetable that the city of Coon Rapids could start and/or build a sidewalk along Springbrook from Coon Rapids Boulevard up to this site if it were to progress?
That's why we have the city engineer here tonight.
Oh, my gosh, how does that work out?
Thank you for the, our question, Commissioner Nalblock. I would say probably about the soonest we could start work on a sidewalk on Springbrook Drive could be as early as next year. We'd have to take a look at what other priorities we have left after we get done with the sidewalk gap work that we're currently working on this year, and then we also have planned for in the future. But I would say in terms of, and it would also depend on the construction and how the, the pace of construction goes with the apartment. I'm sure it's going to be at least another year or so before that's completely done. But I would say within the next couple of years.
All right, and potholes. And number four, the last question, Mr. Harlicker. In that neighborhood, in the Port District area neighborhood, besides the winter rule, of course, of no parking in the street, which was mentioned, what is the parking in the neighborhood for parking on the street?
There are no specific parking regulations for, for the neighborhood. There are no specific parking regulations for the, for the neighborhood.
Okay, that's it? I am done.
Mr. Geisler.
If I may ask, Mr. Hartlicker, what would be the procedure if no parking regulations were to be requested for the Springbrook and Ninety-Fourth?
I believe there's a parking that marks. I can answer that, Commissioner Geisler. Typically, a no parking request starts with a letter to all the neighborhood. And we, we collect comments. We understand how the neighborhood feels about additional parking regulations. And then ultimately, it requires the city council to enact an ordinance, which takes place over the course of two meetings. But it's something that, uh, is ultimately a city council decision at the recommendation of review of the staff first.
Mr. Chair, just really clarifying that. And if that parking ordinance is put into effect, it applies to everybody, not just residents of, of the apartment complex, for example.
Yes.
Correct.
And then if I may ask, these streets, Springbrook and Ninety-Fourth are considered residential streets with no painted shoulder or anything like that as far as throughput of the street would go. If you parked on both sides, would two cars still be able to pass through?
They're, they're standard neighborhood street wits. Except Springbrook Drive, as you approach Coon Rapids Boulevard, does have turn lanes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Um, so let's go to, um, just two things really quick. So I, I think there was also a comment raised about the fact that there is only one entrance into this complex. And I guess, I don't really know if you could shed some light again on if there are any additional requirements or concerns about just having that one entrance in and out of the, um, of the property. Is that a safety concern as was brought up in terms of if emergency vehicles had to come through? Um, you know, what, what does the city recommend in that case?
Yeah, Commissioner Schmalki, the project was reviewed by the fire marshal for emergency access. And he was okay with the design of the project.
Okay, and I think the only one thing that I heard, if, uh, if we've missed anything, raise your hand. But, um, there was also the, uh, the concern brought up from, um, I think it was Mr. McShane about the headlights coming out of the, from the underground parking and that it goes directly into his, um, his home. And so I just wondered if maybe, um, there, there could be some discussion around if there's any additional privacy fencing or something that could be extended along that, if that's possible there, um, to help, um, block that. I don't know what the possibility is, if it's even allowed.
Commissioner Schmalki, it's staff's recommendation that additional screening, such as evergreen trees be planted along there, as well as that privacy fence being extended down.
In addition, okay. I apologize if that was said, thank you.
And Commissioner, any other questions or comments at this time? I have a email from our commissioner who couldn't make it here this evening. Commissioner Heikola, who, uh, asked that I put out a couple of points that, uh, he has on, on this, uh, particular case. And he says that, uh, he does not support the, uh, proposal as it's proposed. Believes a different type of housing project, like a senior living or more upscale project would be better serving the city with a smaller number of units. Uh, he feels that the number of units far exceeds the space available. And he doesn't believe the parking is adequate. And another comment he has, if approved, will there be accessible units for hearing physically impaired tenants? If so, how many? And will they be enforced for people with special needs? And then finally, uh, he believes that the pet area is way too small, that dogs like to run and need adequate space. And that he feels the proposed air, uh, play areas are also too small and that the kids would quickly find other play areas outside of the allotted, uh, tot areas. Those are the comments from Commissioner Heikola. Well, I'll, uh, start things off here. My thoughts on the, uh, on the case. I'm not, uh, in favor of, uh, this, uh, proposal going forward. I believe there's far too many requests for, uh, mitigations and flexibility. The density is just far too great for this area. While you say that there are other apartment units in the city that have been built with these types of densities for this area and with the neighborhood as close as it is to it, uh, that I feel that, uh, this is just far too dense of a proposal for the area. I further feel that, uh, there is not adequate parking. As far as comments made about the Pedersen proposal, I was not in favor of that proposal either, also because of the parking, but it was approved. However, this, there's just not enough parking for the number of units if this unit was to be built. Uh, there's no place in the neighborhood for additional parking. There's no place on this site to add additional parking. It's far too distant, uh, to any kind of a, uh, city park. And I just don't feel that, uh, the city is getting any amenities for the flexibility that we're being asked to, uh, approve here this evening. So I will be voting against this proposal. Commissioner Geisler.
I have to say that I am in general in agreement with the chair here. I believe that the parking is lacking. Um, while I believe that there's the street options, I am concerned about the impact to the local hotel and local businesses as they provide surface lots that may be filled up. And honestly, I, I, I am concerned about the impact to the commercial units that are already there in mixed use, um, as well as the residents' concerns. But I, I, I feel like they're gonna see an open parking lot and park there first cause that's on the way in. Um, and additionally to the transit concerns, um, while I am a deep transit advocate, especially for locating next door, um, there's an eight-hour gap from ten PM to six AM. And workforce apartments would indicate a second or third shift, uh, which may leave us a significant transit gap, which would increase the need for vehicles, in my opinion, and thus also have a need, a deep need for additional parking, at least closer towards a two, a one point seven five or two ratio. And then finally, the green space concern, Mason Park is the closest park, and it is a mile and a half walk. And a mile and a half walk is a long way to bring kids, and it is along the Boulevard. And it is, I mean, the, and it's past some, uh, den, some dense commercial spaces under an overpass. Otherwise, we're crossing forty-seven. Uh, I have, you know, the, the fact that these spaces are adjacent to two large freeways, um, or a highway and a freeway, uh, I'm concerned about children wandering towards spaces where it's actually dangerous for them to be. I know there's a chain link fence towards the north side there, and there's the embankment. But, uh, as we said, uh, as some of the citizenry have said, there, there, you know, bored children will find a way. Um, and, uh, yeah, and that, and that also speaks towards the creek area as well there. So I, I do, I, I am in favor of developing this site towards some level of, of more dense than homes. But I, I agree that this, this unit is, this apartment complex is, is too large for the space that it's provided, and we should see more green space being provided. It, it, it has to be an island unto itself in this neighborhood as far as amenities for its residents. So I will be voting against this as well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I'll just add that, you know, first of all, I wanna, I wanna compliment you on the design of the plan. I think that it's, um, it's, it's really nice from everything that you're proposing and offering. I do think that there are some challenges. I'm a little concerned as well about the, the play areas really not being robust enough. And that dog park, it seems like a nice idea, but, um, you know, with the size of the structure, I'm just not sure how many people would actually walk all that distance to get there to use that small area. Um, and then is the rest of the property really then conducive to running their pets or taking them for walks, um, even through the neighborhood area and so forth? Um, I think it's a great plan. I just am not convinced that this is the right location for it. If there was more property around it, I think it would be maybe a better fit. And I really do agree with, um, uh, with everyone in terms of the transportation concerns, especially for the intent of the residents that you expect to move in here. Um, I think we owe it to them to be able to, um, you know, to be responsible on if we're going to put a structure like this in a neighborhood. We wanna make sure that it's accessible to the amenities that they would need in order to be able to live there comfortably and so forth. So for that, I think I'm gonna have to, um, to, to, to deny it as well.
Chair, Scott.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
Um, I have a few opinions, which I'm very, uh, uh, I hold them very close to my chest. I'd like to challenge the commission to look at the perspective I'm going to present and to people in, in the, in the room tonight. Coon Rapids is very livable. It's a wonderful community. It's one of the main reasons I moved up here from South Minneapolis twenty years ago, twenty-plus years. Uh, I love this, uh, area. What I'm gonna say, there are some positives to this being a thirty-eight million dollar project being developed. Uh, no project is perfect. But you have to take into consideration perhaps the clientele. We're looking towards, this, uh, project is focusing on a changing demographic and providing affordable renting. And you have to think of that clientele. The perspective perhaps that a lot of us may have is that we have, which Coon Rapids is, is a wonderful reason why people move here, is to have that option of having dwellings, good parks, good schools, and good yards and having that, uh, little, that home with a little picket fence dream. Another consideration is, uh, if you've noticed that the building appearance, design, doesn't it look very similar to what the current style is going around the Twin Cities? Where, and I'll point out, one very close to us is Riverdale Station, which is going up right now. Uh, I've seen the design and the look of that very similar. Or a lot of similarities, I shouldn't say exact or similar. Also, in Ramsey, also another development right up, right beside Light Rail, which has a lot of similarities in appearance. Uh, I'm familiar with the Lexington one. That is a little different, but it kinda has the same. Oh, um, so, uh, in, in just summing it up, uh, the last point I'd like to make is that if you look at the neighborhood, it is residential. But if you look at it, look at all the developments that are, and opportunities that are going on around this. There's a Holiday Inn, there's a Comfort Inn. The Alina is expanding, Call Center's expanding down the street. All the development along Springbrook Drive. Fridley has Springbrook Nature Center, which is probably the nearest park I can think of. Northdale Center, massive shopping center, which is in a non-Coon Rapids neighborhood, so I won't speak anything positive of it. But there is some challenges to it, but, um, I think there's a lot more pluses to consider. And, uh, the final, um, checkmark is that our wonderful, uh, city planning department recommends, or has made some very good demands, um, in engineering comments and a lot of, uh, fourteen conditions in order for this project to be considered. So based upon that, I'm definitely going to vote for this. Even though there are some shortcomings, I'm weighing the positives. And I've outlined, I think, all of them, maybe some of them even twice, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bradley.
I'd like to echo much of what the other commissioners have said and adopted as my own. I, I wanna compliment the developers. Uh, this is a challenging property to develop. And to develop it as a low-income housing, you need the density, which you've made clear to make it worthwhile. Uh, the problem is, you, this is a very challenging piece of property to develop this way. Uh, there's not a lot of room. Uh, you had to make a lot of concessions to try to make it work. I'm not sure that those concessions are going to work with the neighborhood and with the city. I've got concerns with regard to the mass transit. There is a mass transit hub fairly nearby. There is a bus stop that goes by. But mass transit in Coon Rapids is not developed to the point where it serves the needs of a lot of people. I try to use it when I can. But quite honestly, more often than not, I can't spend the extra time that it takes to wait for the train or the bus because it just doesn't work. It, there's very limited times that you can get on it. I have concerns with, I've already made clear with the parking. Um, I think I could've lived with it if there would've been enough room where you had some space reserved in case there were future demands that you could expand the parking. It didn't work with this property. There's a reason that it's, this property hasn't been developed in quite some time. It's a challenging piece to develop. I hope we can get something that works. I hope we can get something that's good for the city and as well as for the developer and owner. I just don't think this is it.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Casey.
I'll add a few thoughts here. This pushes the envelope, this proposal in this locale. But to me, the locale, um, speaks to everything that it's set out to do. It's meant to be affordable. It's meant to be located in a place where jobs are nearby or available with the, the transportation hub that is North Town at least. The people that I think would, maybe looking at different clientele, but, um, the density's a problem. But I think the clientele is gonna live and work in Coon Rapids nearby. I mean, that's the whole reason you look for a place to live is it's near your job or near your family or whatever. Um, so I think locale is key, key. And it's, it's a tight fit, for sure. Um, I don't, density isn't my main concern, maybe more so than parking, though. I think parking, parking ratios are overrated, in my opinion. And I, I say that because anecdotally, I guess, I, I drive into Riverdale and I look at multiple stripe spots on the pavement that are just, right now, they're holding excess snow for us. But there's a, you know, there's just no need for the parking anecdotally that I see there. And I think that's becoming more, um, more the case. And I guess, to put it out there further, I'd like to see the city kinda readjust their parking requirements. their parking requirements for businesses and, um, possibly, um, apartments and things like that. I think that's changing. We don't see the retail end of it, um, that we used to. Riverdale Station is, is also allotting part of their new buildings to affordable housing. There's a need. Those, those units will fill. And so while there are things that I, I, I do question, the, the dog park, the activity area, I think the draw for the, for the affordable housing is, um, it's, there's a need. It'll get filled. So I'll, I'll just, I think that's kinda what I wanted to hit. It's kind of a buzzword, that affordable housing, I guess. I think it's, there's a real need. And for that reason, I will be supporting this proposal.
Chair Schwartz. Yeah, I'd like to have an opportunity to address the commission.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for your comments. Um, you know, in talking with the team here, we've, um, we heard, heard what you said and some of the concerns. I guess I would ask, um, if rather than formally voting, if we could table and give the team a chance to make some adjustments, see if we can make it work to maybe try to accommodate some of the parking and green space concerns and see if we could get another opportunity to present to the, to the commission to see if, um, we could, uh, find a project that is more suitable.
Mr. Hariker, we, if we were to table, you know, of course, that's the petitioner asking to extend past the cutoff date here, correct?
Correct, Chair. We'd have to extend the sixty-day period.
Yep.
Not another sixty days. We have that opportunity. It has not yet been extended.
All right.
Chair Schwartz, I have a question.
Commissioner Nabla.
I'm curious to those on the commission that have concern of to reiterate those issues that the applicant needs to focus on, to be clear, that's not in addition to the fourteen items in our packet that are recommended. Like all the engineering requirements, the privacy fence, the tru, the landscape requirements, sidewalk, anything that's not listed on there, I'm asking for clarification. Just so that we're fair to the applicant. So that, Dean?
Commissioner Schmalki.
I guess I would, I would ask the, um, the petitioner, if you have any questions from the planning commission that you need further clarification on?
Um, yes, thank you, Commissioner and Chair. Um, I guess, parking, I've heard a lot of discussion around. Um, we can revisit and see what we can do, but, you know, we have provided data. We've hired engineers, traffic engineers that support even a lower parking ratio than what we're, what we're presenting. So, um, I've heard a number of people say they think it's not enough, but we've provided data supporting that ours is sufficient. So if that's one of the holdups, I guess I would look to, uh, get a better understanding of what that, how we achieve that or what that ratio is or how we get to a point that gets people comfortable around that, that issue. I mean, it's, I've heard a number of items. Parking seems to be one that's revisited a lot. And I, I guess I'm a little bit out of a loss because, like I said, we've, we've done studies, provided other examples of other projects, hired SPAC engineering, gotten I T E reports that all support this, and I haven't seen any other data contradicting that. So I don't really know what else can be provided, provided at that. If we came back and added a handful more stalls, is that gonna be sufficient? I don't, I don't know. Um, so I guess a little clarity around that would be helpful as well.
Commissioner Geisler. Uh, I believe that I T E report you referenced does set forth a, a general guideline of 1.5, which you're still south of. And that, e, your own report says, well, well, we do see experi, uh, areas that are lower than that. Their reference was 1.5 per unit. Yeah, 1.46 is the current, you're south of that, 1.5 is what I T E is recommending.
Uh, I think it was 1.31 for mid-rise, right?
If you could come up to the mic.
Uh, evening, Commissioners. My name's Max Mon with SPAC Consulting. We did the traffic study for this development. Um, and the I T E number, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, parking generation number four in mid-rise multifamily housing in a general suburban area. The peak parking demand is 1.31 stalls per unit, which would be 241.
Correct, but I believe the guideline they set forth was 1.5 as a general guideline in that same report, was it not?
I'm not sure of that, no.
Okay. I, I, I guess I would just say that, that would be my response. I remember seeing that in one of these items was set forth approximate parking of about 1.5. Uh, while I, while I do agree that the 2.25 is probably in excess of your development and what your use case is here, um, and by no means getting to that would be the goal. Um, but something above that would be what I would consider a more tenable number to look at.
Chair and Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner. I guess if, I don't know where that leaves us. I would be, if, if, if that were sufficient, if that were a condition to move forward, I feel comfortable. That looks like it's six more stalls. I think we could figure out how to get six more stalls. Maybe we lose a unit and get some more stalls or something. I, I would feel comfortable if it were conditioned to get to that 1.5. And that would get a conditional approval. I would feel comfortable being able to do that.
Chair.
Commissioner Nabla.
My question is, is, uh, to get around this, uh, issue or question of density of parking, um, the b, building either has to be made smaller or the property has to be made bigger. Isn't a, a third option a possibility? There are a lot of vacant lots in this neighborhood. Uh, there is perhaps unused parking at the Holiday Inn or at the Comfort Inn, five hundred yards down the street that could be leased or, uh, rented for additional space for that requirement. Or development of some of, a partially of those vacant lots off of street access that could provide ground-level parking space that is hopefully attached to the development, 'cause there are multiple owned by the same company. Just, just a third option for consideration. I'm trying to support my opinion and my recommendation and also to, a win-win for everyone.
Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, so to the spa, parking space perspective, that, that is one aspect. I, I, I actually would, I would be in favor of tabling this to allow a multi-faceted address. I do believe there's other considerations for, as far as green space and other items like that that have been brought up to address it. Parking is one of them. You asked for a specific metric number. That's, that's my individual opinion, not this commission's opinion by any means, um, nor the city's. Uh, but that, that would be where, uh, that was my point of providing that specific number.
Sure.
Mr. Chair. Can I just clarify a question, or I guess a response to Commissioner Nabla's? Comment for observation. You know, parking would need to be addressed on this developed site. There are situations, and it wouldn't apply here, where you can do shared parking, where you're co-developing a site, but that's not what's happening here. So that parking would have to be, would have to be accommodated on-site. I think Commissioner Nabla kinda stated what the options are. Either you potentially create more parking, you reduce density. I mean, I think those are things, at least from staff's perspective. I think we're hearing what the planning commission is, is saying. And if the commission ultimately decides that you wanna table this, I guess we would go back to the developer, have those conversations and walk through what those scenarios might look like and see if we can reach some other, uh, some other scenario that we would then bring back again, if you decide to table it this evening.
Thank you.
Well, my, my thoughts as far as what's, what you'd need to do to make this proposal, uh, feasible is you've gotta reduce your density. You've just got far too many units for the size, size of this property. And by reducing the number of units, you're then going to be lowering your need for parking, which would bring up the ratio that you would have, which possibly would dissolve that issue. But I will, I believe the, it all revolves around your density is just far too high for this piece of property. That's my thought.
Can you clarify, when you say our density's too high, what you, and your perspective?
Well, the city court, court, city court says thirty, thirty, maximum of thirty. I possibly would be able to go, and I'm just ballparking, not saying what you would need to do, but thirty, thirty-two units per acre. But you're, you're up at fort forty, almost forty-two units per acre. That's, that's just way too big, way too, way too high.
Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I think the density, we have approved things in this commission where the density is higher than that, primarily that Pedersen Floral. But that too was a locale issue. And it, because it was such close proximity to Mercy Hospital and, um, Anook Ramsey, that we, we felt that that could tolerate it. I feel that way about this lot. But when we talk about density, um, you almost have to reduce the footprint of the building in order to get a few more surface lots, is that, you know? And that reduces your units, which makes it borderline non-profitable. You know, we don't wanna see that happen. So it, we're pushing the envelope and it's a delicate balance. I realize that, but, so that might be something to slightly reduce the footprint of the space, might buy a little more green space. If you're gonna, if we're gonna table it and you're taking some ideas home.
Yeah, we will look into that. I mean, I can affirmatively say that the thirty units, uh, the, the project won't move forward um, at thirty units an acre. I do know that. We can try to find a balance. Um, we're pushing the bottom of the limit right now as it is. Um, but we will, we can see if there's any, anything we can stretch or anything we can adjust to try to make it a little more, more feasible.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chair, I, I think I would echo that. I mean, you're asking for a thirty percent overage. When you put, look at it that way from a units-per-acre perspective, that's, that's pretty, that's a pretty big jump. Um, you know, and I, I think the Pedersen Floral development, I, I think, is a little bit of a false comparison. That's directly on the boulevard. Um, that's a lot of easy in and out. Right next to it is commercial area, commercial space. There is a residential space behind it, but they're not, their streets are not directly impacted by that development. I don't think they're apples-to-apples in this comparison. I, I, I do think there's some similarities that can be drawn, but, but with respect to the density perspective, there's, the access is just not the same.
So, Commission, anyone willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to table, uh, items nineteen dash four and nineteen dash five to allow the applicant to have.
Do we need to take them individually?
Yes, so you'll need to do them individually both and then include that they'll need to sign a waiver of the sixty-eight.
So let's just take nineteen dash four first, then?
Mr. Chair, I move to table item nineteen dash four to allow the applicant, as well as to request that they sign a waiver for the extension of timeline as well.
Motion by Geisler, seconded by Schmalki to table, uh, do a date specific or do we leave it open?
We should do it date specific to the April.
The April meeting?
April meeting, which is, I believe it's, uh, eighteen. Nobody's looking at a calendar.
April eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Mr. Chair, I accept a friendly amendment to April eighteenth.
At, uh, all right with the seconder? So we will table to April eighteenth meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And in case fifteen dash, or nineteen dash five?
Mr. Chair, I move to table item nineteen dash five to the April eighteenth meeting for the same conditions as listed in the nineteen dash four tabling.
Motion by Geisler, seconded by Schmalki to table nineteen dash five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And so do we keep the public hearings open then, or will we have to reopen the public hearings? Since it was already closed.
You can reopen them.
I can reopen them tonight and keep them open?
Oh, you close them tonight.
And, and do we have to re-notice?
Yeah.
We probably have to, if you close it.
We'll do that, we'll re-advertise.
You'll re-notice?
Just to make sure.
I guess if your, if your intent is to reopen the hearing and take additional testimony.
Well, depending upon what they come back with.
Yeah.
And I think you're probably gonna have to, so it's probably best to just re-advertise.
All right.
Okay.
So to be clear, that decision was to allow a public hearing at the April meeting regarding the stoplight. Is that correct?
I imagine that based on what they come back with, then the residents or others may have additional comments. So I think that's the safest route.
Thank you.
All right, our next case is planning case nineteen dash two, preliminary plat for Port Riverwalk Central Homes. Mr. Hariker.
Yes, Chair Schwartz. First item is, uh, it's a similar project to what you just considered, the plat and site plan. Kinda go together. Um, what is being proposed is a preliminary plat for a hundred and thirty-six, um, single-family lots. Um, property is located in Port Riverwalk, which is between Yegrit Boulevard and basically, uh, Coon Creek, where it passes underneath, uh, Coon Creek Boulevard. It's this area right in here along the south side of Coon Rapids Boulevard. Site is about, uh, forty-three acres in size. The plat will include, um, a public street, Riverwalk, which extends from Yegrit parallel to Coon Rapids Boulevard, and then ends in a cul-de-sac at the, uh, east end of the site, just east of, uh, Coon Creek. Public streets include an extension of Drake, which ties into the existing street. Extension of, uh, Bluebird, which ties into an existing street, as well as Abusit. All these tie into existing streets. And then you've got on the east end, Zilla Street, which will go from the current stoplight at Abusit and Coon Rapids Boulevard and tie into the existing Abusit, um, south and east of the site. Public streets, we plotted, our private streets will be plotted on outlots. They will service the, um, the lots between Riverwalk Drive and Coon Rapids Boulevard. This area here, and then in the central part, essentially extends from Yegrit Boulevard to Zilla Street on the east end. These outlaw, outlots in the middle here. These outlots in the middle here serve as stormwater ponds, and they're also stormwater ponds, linear ones that run along Coon Rapids Boulevard. The right-of-ways really vary in width. Riverwalk Drive is sixty feet. Some of the smaller streets like Bluebird and Drake are sixty-six feet, one is sixty feet. The right-of-way width of the streets south of Riverwalk Drive depend on what the existing street system is, so they'll be consistent with the street that they're tying into. With that, I'll answer any questions on the preliminary plat.
Mr. Harlecker, can you show where, I know there's been talk of a possibility of a pedestrian bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard, could you show on the drawing where that would be on this side of the roadway?
Might work better on this one. Mr. Hanson?
Commissioner, Chair Schwartz, and generally be located a skew across Coon Rapids Boulevard, across from the--
So northwesterly of Abuset.
Is there property available here to put the overpass or the pedestrian walkway?
There's space being dedicated so that there would be room for that to be accommodated if the funding ever comes along to construct a pedestrian bridge, yes.
All right, thank you. And, Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Harlecker, is it one hundred and thirty-six or one hundred and thirty-seven homes that are--
One hundred and thirty-six. There's a hundred, this lot here, outlot--
Yeah, that's what I thought.
At one time was proposed to be a developable lot, they changed it to taking the home off of that.
Looked to me like that, too, so, thank you.
And Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, are there any sidewalk connections inside of this development between Abuset and Egrit to allow connections to the bus station that's centrally located?
Yeah, Commissioner Geisler, we can look at that as part of the site plan review. There is a system of sidewalks throughout the development.
And then, Mr. Harlecker, as far as the plat is concerned, for the court homes, their width is set at forty feet, that is correct?
Correct.
Are there other sites that, which makes those individual lots less than a tenth of an acre? Are there other sites like that located throughout Coon Rapids currently?
I believe villas on the Boulevard, which are down just east of Crooked Lake, are similar-sized lots.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Nablud.
We're gonna do like previously, we're gonna discuss nineteen dash two and nineteen dash three, and then vote separately.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, if the Commission's comfortable with a plat, we can move on to the site plan, then open the public hearings following that.
Sounds good.
This is a general layout. For the site plan, the applicant's proposing three different housing types. What he's calling court homes, which are in blue, those are rear-loaded homes with the front of the homes facing Riverwalk Drive and Coon Rapids Boulevard. There tend to be smaller homes on smaller lots, kind of townhomes without the common walls. The green are single-level homes, and generally the lots are about fifty, fifty feet in width. And the red here are two-story homes. Generally, the lots are similar fifty feet, but the houses are a little bit larger, lots are a little bit larger also. Here's the site plan. We've got the court homes in this area here, it's kind of in pieces because you couldn't get it on one slide, essentially between Zilla Street and Egrit Boulevard. These streets in here are private, they're twenty-four feet wide. The houses will front on the streets. Garages will be accessed via these private drives. Driveways are about twenty-two feet, which will allow parking in the driveways. Streets are not wide enough for parking, however, there are parking areas included in various locations adjacent to the court homes. This here is our stormwater pond, stormwater pond. These lots here will face the pond, as will these lots. Then you move down farther, another stormwater pond, and again, private streets with parking areas adjacent to the court homes. And then down on, this is the far east end, Zilla Drive, you've got Riverwalk Drive going to a cul-de-sac at this point. The proposed single-family homes does require flexibility, requires use, flexibility for the homes. Single-family homes are not an allowed use in the ports. Back with streets and sidewalks, there's a sidewalk along the north side of Riverwalk from Egrit down to, all the way down to the end of the cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac has sidewalk on both sides. Zilla Street has sidewalks on both sides. Abuset is proposed to have sidewalk on one side. One of the conditions of approval is that the sidewalk be conducted on the west side also. There's a sidewalk on one side of Bluebird, there really isn't a sidewalk to connect to, that's why there's no sidewalk on that side. And then on the far end with Drake, there is a sidewalk on the east that connects, there is also a sidewalk, excuse me, on the west side. There's also a sidewalk south of the development on the east side that will be tied into, so staff is recommending that they also install a sidewalk along this portion here to tie into the existing one. There's a sidewalk on the east side of Egrit that this sidewalk will tie into, as well as the sidewalks on, I believe, oh, you can't see it on here, as well as the sidewalk on Drake Street. They all tie into the sidewalk on the east side of Egrit Boulevard. This is a large wetland complex here. These lots here all have access out onto Riverwalk Drive. I believe they're the only ones that do, and the reason for that are the lots on the cul-de-sac have direct access out. But on the main portion of Riverwalk Drive, these lots do because there wasn't an alternative way to line them up. That's the reason why there's no sidewalk along this side, because of the conflict with the driveways and safety concerns. And there will be crosswalks at locations along Riverwalk and where streets cross, sidewalks cross the street. There are trail connections along this stormwater pond, as well as this one that'll tie in to the trail along Coon Rapids Boulevard. Here's a grading plan. The houses are a mix of slab-on-grade. All the court homes are slab-on-grade. The single-story are a mix, some of them, like along here, are walkouts, slab-on-grade, and then same with the two stories are slab-on-grade. And then on the east end, some are slab-on-grade, some are walkouts, depending on the topography of the site. So there's a mix, but I would say the majority of the units are slab-on-grade. The Mississippi River Critical Corridor boundary goes through this site, and it really cuts across these two lots here, so any grading that occurs within the boundary on these two sites will have to meet the city's ordinance with respect to the critical corridor regulations. Landscaping, they've got overstory trees proposed along all the streets, generally at about forty-foot on-center intervals, which meets city code. Then they've got overstory trees along the front of the houses that face Coon Rapids Then they've got ornamental trees interior where the private drives are because of the space limitations. The applicant is working on refining the landscape plan for the stormwater ponds. They're working on making it a more natural feature as opposed to a formal landscaping plan. The landscaping around the individual homes, there'll be foundation plantings. They're also working on appropriate locations for front yard trees. These lots here that back up to the wetlands do have ornamental trees across the back. There's some evergreen trees along the Boulevard here where the homes are sideways to the Boulevard. As you work your way east, again, you've got ornamental trees. I think I would like to add as a condition that they also put some evergreen trees on these, in this portion of Coon Rapids Boulevard where these units, or this unit backs up or sideways to the Boulevard. These trees here are ornamental, they should be changed to overstory. And you'll see in the back of these lots here and here where the backyards back up, they are proposing evergreen trees to help screen the properties from one another. And then as you get down towards the east end, again, they've got the street trees along the street. These have some ornamental trees, and then overstory trees across the back, and a mix of overstory and evergreen along the Boulevard here. Dive into the housing types, we've got the court homes, again, in the blue. These are the proposed sample elevations for those two-story units with porches across the front, cement board siding, which will be extended around all four sides. They also have a mix on the front, they've got a brick where the porch is, the formal porches, and they've got a mix of lap siding, board and batten, as well as shake siding in some of the gables, peaks. There'll be a mix of colors. Next, the green homes, which are the single-level, they're more traditional, front-loaded homes. Again, cement board siding all around, a mix of stone on the front, and a mix of siding, board and batten, lap on the units. And finally, the red area here, which are the two-story, these are typical elevations, again, a mix of materials and cement board siding all the way around. These do have living space above the garages, so it reduces the impact of the garage, and so it's a less prominent part of the home, even though it does face the front. All the entrances are covered with small porches. The flexibility, they're looking for flexibility in three areas. The first one is to allow single-family homes, and to allow density that's less than required by city code. Code requires eight units per acre, they're proposing three point one four. They're looking for design flexibility for setbacks. Since this is a use that wasn't planned for the ports, there aren't setback requirements that work for single-family homes. So what we did was, there is a development type that's called a very-density residential district, that is allowed in other areas of River Rapids overlay, just not in the port. They have setbacks that fit better with these type of housing units, smaller homes on smaller lots. So that's what staff decided to go with for setback requirements. And with that, they are requesting flexibility for setbacks between units. Code requires ten feet between units. The plan here has five feet between units. The code requires twenty-two feet setback from city streets. They're proposing twenty feet in places, and for the street homes at front, also on side, when corner lots, there isn't a distinction with street side yards. In the LDR, in our typical residential districts, there's a side yard, street side yard requirement that's kind of halfway between the typical ten-foot side yard requirement and the thirty-five-foot front yard requirement. That's intended to recognize that these are really side yards, they aren't front yards, but still provide a certain amount of setback along the street. These lots are proposed at twenty-foot setbacks, which would meet the typical standard, but it's less than the twenty-two-foot standard that's required in the very-density residential development. And finally, the other thing is sidewalks. Code requires sidewalks on both sides of all public streets, and as we noted earlier, there is an area here along Bluebird, as well as a portion of River Rapids Drive that has sidewalk on only one side. So they are asking for flexibility to allow that. With that, I'll answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience also to answer questions.
Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Chair? Commissioner Braden? Mr. Harlecker, do you want, if this is approved, do you want it subject to the amended planting and trubery that you were indicating, the changes that you'd like to have made to that?
Correct, I would like those added as conditions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler?
Mr. Harlecker, towards the single families on the eastern edge there versus the court homes, the green section there, on the landscape plan, the density of the landscaping gets a little thinner, quite a bit. Is that, does that meet the same spacing requirements as we would expect? It just seems to go from a decent amount of trees along the court homes to a handful.
On the cul-de-sac here?
Along the Boulevard, sorry, along the rear side of those house.
Oh, up in here?
Yeah.
I mean, they are quite a distance from the street, which is out here. Yes, the Commission can certainly add, to ask them some evergreen trees along here, similar to what they got here, to provide a better screen along the Boulevard.
I think that would be, would be--
Can I add something to that comment, Scott? Sorry.
That's all right.
The work on Coon Rapids Boulevard will be adding some trees along that side of the Boulevard to kind of complement what Scott was just pointing out. And I think the other gap that you're seeing is where Coon Creek is, where there are no lots, and then you have the cul-de-sac at the end, so that kind of explains, at least from my perspective, why it's a little bit more broken up.
Okay. Maybe if you would give a little elaboration on the county project that's going on along the Boulevard, kind of in conjunction with this?
Yeah, so as part of the Riverwalk development, the city is going to actually be leading the reconstruction of Coon Rapids Boulevard. So that's going to take place from Egrit Boulevard all the way to the East River Road, Coon Rapids Boulevard split. What we're going to be doing is replacing the traffic signals at both Egrit-- What we're going to be doing is replacing the traffic signals at both Egrit Boulevard and Avoset Streets. So those will be brand-new, they will have the new flashing yellow arrow indicator that some of you might be familiar with in Coon Rapids here, starting to appear. The pavement will be completely reconditioned all the way from Egrit to the split. Sidewalks are going to be added on the north side of Coon Rapids Boulevard from Avoset all the way to the Super America or the Speedway at Egrit. And then the south side, as was mentioned, the regional trail will be connected through there as well. So we'll have a 10-foot asphalt trail from Egrit all the way to Avoset. And then decorative street lighting will be along the Boulevard as well as trees and some median landscaping. Extended left turn lanes at both Egrit and Avoset, as well as removal of the full access intersections at the Dunn Small Engine Business and the Coon Rapids Boulevard extension. Those will be converted to right-in, right-out access. That, that work is expected to start in June. Will go through November.
And then, if I may go back to the landscaping conversation, there's, there's a shift in species as you progress down there. Is that by intent or are the tree, tree species meant to be intermixed? We go from Linden to the sugar maples to then the Northwoods maple towards the end. Is that, is that by design?
I assume that's by design, yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Under the applicant. And if I may pivot to the elevation conversation, is there an elevation available for the court homes for their garages? Are those going to be intermixed? The other, the elevations showed a combination of, of multi-panel or multi-color or multi- windows, no windows, that kind of thing. Is there going to be a breakup in those as well? Since those will be facing that street space, do we, do we have that, or to the applicant?
Commissioner Geisler, you're talking about the, the rear elevations of the court homes?
Correct.
Okay. I'll let the applicant address that when he comes up.
Okay. Oh, I have a, we're cautious for the applicant, I'll wait there.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Harlicker, the, this development's going to be subject to an HOA, right?
Correct.
Is it expected by the city that the HOA is going to be responsible for all of the exterior and landscaping around the, the development?
I, I believe the HOA will be responsible for all the landscaping and street maintenance for the court homes and then the yards for the single level as well as the two-level homes.
Okay. And if there is some kind of failure in the landscaping, is the city able to require the HOA or the developer to replace?
Yes, typically, if there's, if the landscaping falls into disrepair, city code does require there's a maintenance provision in city code and it would be addressed to the homeowners' association to make whatever necessary repairs are required.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Harlicker? Do listeners wish to make a presentation?
Chair and commission member, my name is David Patberg. I'm with Center Homes. I don't have a formal pretty picture display. Scott has all of that stuff, but I wanted to just share a couple thoughts. Center Homes has been working very closely with city staff on this project for a long time. It's a fairly complicated subdivision, not quite as simple as buying a farm field and putting in some homes. This, just by reference, this is land that the city owns. And so when we went under contract on this, my shifting changed and said, this is a partnership. And this is us working closely with the city. And we often ask the question, "City, what do you want?" And so it's been very much walking hand in hand through this process. And it's been a very good experience. I've gotten to know city staff well as we've run across these many things. I find it interesting that the only other person in the audience right now is Dale Wills. And so Dale Wills also works for Center Homes. He actually owns Center Homes. And it's, I think it's a great benefit to staff to understand why there is no one else here because we've engaged the public. We've already had multiple public open houses. We've taken this, these ideas and thoughts to city council and so they've seen it. And as we were preparing for this meeting, we realized Planning Commission hasn't seen it. I feel like everyone else has except Planning Commission, so that might be a little bit of a miss on our part to not have it here before this time. But we are excited to be in Coon Rapids. We actually office down the street about a block from here and we're excited to have a subdivision here in the city. And so as we move forward in this, there's still some, some complications continue that we work out and we're excited to work with staff as we work through those items. Just by, just by way of, let's be totally clear here, there is an old contamination on the site that part of this open space is planned in that spot particularly. There was an old gas station and an old kind of temporary dump site behind one of the buildings and an old dry cleaner that we know about and it's been cleaned up. Well, of course, after you clean it up, the MPCA has some few other disclosures. And so we're not afraid of them. We'll disclose them, we'll mitigate them well, but that's some of the reasons why those open spaces are in those spots as we work through some of that. So there's been a lot of that coordination, a lot of that planning and thinking and trying hard to do it right and make it work. As, as I was listening to Scott present and listening to some of the questions that you had, I wanted to just clarify one of two things. Scott mentioned, I think just in passing, the report's correct, that the code allows 10 feet between houses. It's actually 20 feet and we're asking, and so that's a 10-foot side yard setback and we're asking for a five-foot side yard setback, thus 10 feet between houses. The report's correct, just as he was mentioning it. A couple other questions that came up. I made notes about the tree changes, so that sounds good. The tree species down the street, down Riverwalk Drive, we mostly put, at this stage of the game, we put the types of species we like. If the council or the commission wants those to be a little bit more variety down the street, we're open to that. It wasn't by, oh, design, I want all Northwood maples right here and then all Linden's right here. That wasn't deliberate in that way. It was getting the numbers of trees on and the species we wanted, so we have flexibility to that. On the court homes, the question about the garage elevations, I don't have pictures of that. The reason why is when we very first started on this and started looking at the site and how it might lay out, our biggest question and concern was, what is this neighborhood going to look like from Coon Rapids Boulevard? And so that's what our focus has been about the porches, the front porches, that, that nice space and what it's going to look like as you drive down there. And so that's where our effort's been. We're getting ready to build a subdivision in the city of Ramsey that, not exactly the same, but it's an alley, I call it an alley-loaded, even though it's not truly an alley, a rear-loaded house. And in that one, the houses are a little narrower, but what we've done is we have the garage door, we have the, the nice siding. I almost said vinyl. We're not doing vinyl in this one, but the siding, we have a belly band and then windows on the back. And so it's, the rear is a garage and the house is 30 feet wide and the garage is 20 feet wide. It's, it's a garage. In Ramsey, we have dressed it up a little bit. In this case, once the neighborhood's built, you're not really going to see much of those garages because of, we have a 24-foot wide road and then we have roughly 20 feet back a curb to garage. It's, it's, it's going to feel like an attached townhome neighborhood from that perspective even though it's not. And so you won't see those garages that much. That's why we haven't portrayed anything like that.
Okay, well, there'll be living space above the garages?
Yes, expect living.
So it'll be a flat?
I wouldn't say all of them will be flat in our Ramsey subdivision, the houses, the footprints are smaller and so on the Ramsey ones, it is flat because we have garage space, we have living space right above garage. On these one, we have a little bit more space to work with, so I'm not going to say every single one of them is going to be flat, but I expect some of them to be flat, to have two-story of, of straight vertical space. And so what we've done there is dress it up with a, with an architectural feature, a belly band, something of that effect. The other thing that Scott mentioned is we have infiltration basins, one, and filtration basins and a dry pond. That's those kind of spaces in between there. There's also linear infiltration basins right along Coon Rapids Boulevard. Stormwater's been frankly a bit of a challenge as we're going through this. We, when we saw how that stormwater was coming together and that we were doing filtration basins, we paused and we said, man, those are very prominent filtration basins, very easily seen, and we wanted to do them right. And so I actually hired a separate landscape architect and that's why I don't have the details for this meeting. I have drafts and I'll be sharing them with the staff very shortly, but I wish I had them here because it's not going to be just a pond with plants inside of it. There's, there's going to be, we're being very deliberate about how those are going to look, trying to make them look good not just in one year but in 10 years because they're, they're very prominent about with various plantings and trees and things like that. And so us, thus us being creative, we didn't get it done right for this meeting. And so we have those and we're continuing to work very closely with staff on how those are going to look and how those are going to feel. So that's my thoughts and answers of questions and I, available for any other questions that you might have.
Commissioner Bradley?
To the garage conversation, I think I'd like to clarify my question for you. Looking at the single-family elevations that you have there?
Yeah.
You know, my, my intent there was, you have different garages?
Mm-hmm.
On them, same thing goes for your two stories, both of those elevations. They're, they're different. That's, that was my only comment.
Got it.
Is breaking them up and making them different so you don't have...
You like the variety.
Yeah, having, having 10 white garages with no glasses on the line and then 10 across the way of the same. Well, that, well, we may not see it from the Boulevard, those residents will.
They will, absolutely.
Every day.
Yep.
I want, you know, if I was living there, I want my home to be my home. I want it to look different at least to the three next to it or to, as far as it'll go. So that was the intent of that conversation point.
Making a note.
And then as far as the landscape plan goes, you know, I guess my question to you from a design intent, I hear you, you know, just getting the numbers on, on there. Do you want the subdivision to feel unified or separate portions between the court, the single and the two-story? Because to my mind, if this is, if this is a unified subdivision, intermixing the species along the Boulevard there that, again, to that visible space, makes it feel unified?
Right.
I, I think that'd be beneficial.
So are you voting for a unified or separate neighborhoods?
Like an intermingled species?
Understood.
Is what I, is what I would, would think. That would make that a full, the entire three-block-long development look like one piece.
Right. The reality is, did you have anything else I wanted to just...
Just, just where possible. I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be every other, every other, right? Not, nothing like that, just intermixed.
So what, because of how these neighborhoods are set up, we'll actually, they'll all, they'll be an association for everything. Because one portion of the neighborhood will have private streets, we'll have an association for that neighborhood of private streets. And so that is, the court homes will have that, they will be a separate neighborhood. They'll have a separate association. Their fee structure is different because they have to maintain the roads and do long-term maintenance on them. And so they, they will be a separate association and that one thing, we're contemplating how that might work and we might want to make them feel a little bit more like a separate neighborhood. But your point is correct, as we do these Boulevard trees, we might be able to, with landscaping, tie them all together.
Okay. And then to pivot to a totally different topic, your construction here is slab-on-grade. What are your severe weather concerns for interior construction? This is a lot of homes, a lot of places, and I know you've got some stairwells in there because they're two-story. But how are you, how are you planning for severe weather shelter for the individuals and the residents in this, in these areas?
That, so we've, we've had good experience building many neighborhoods of, of slab-on-grade neighborhoods. That, the question that you just asked, we never get asked from a buyer. It's something that they, they don't consider. When, when they look at the neighborhood and they look at it, they see the space underneath the stairwell as a place of safety and as a, something to that effect, that, that that's what they look towards and that's what they're feeling about. So there, we have seen other cities have these types of severe weather things, whether it's a central gathering place or something built within the homes. And that's not something we are planning in this. Those get, those can become very expensive and our experience is that buyers aren't looking to pay for those types of features in their homes and they see the areas under the stairwell as to be able to provide that protection.
Mr. Harlicker, if I may, the similar development that we previously mentioned down by, down the Boulevard there has a central storm or severe weather shelter, is that correct?
I don't believe it does. They did have a community center planned at one time, but they amended the plan to eliminate that.
Okay, so this would be similar to that then in the current state?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Commissioner Casey?
So those interior streets within the courtyard homes, are those the ones that are labeled A?
Yes.
For now, B?
Yes.
And they either remain that way or they don't, right?
Our, our intent is to have a name and fit some type of, it'll be a conversation with city staff to make sure it's not confusing with them being named. We specifically do them that way to make it very clear to you that they're not city streets.
Right.
That they're privately owned. Most private streets end up getting some type of street name that fits within the city address system, but on a plat like this, it's on purpose to not have it be a city name. So it's obvious to you that you're like, wait, Street A, that doesn't make sense. Well, it's because it's private.
Okay.
Commissioner Bradley?
I wanted to address this both to the city staff and Center Homes. I want to compliment you for what appears to be a very thoughtful approach to this design and compliment you on the work that you put into it. It appears to hit, you know, pretty much, I think, what is good for the city, what the city wants. And I think your approach to working with the city as a partner, kudos, kudos to you for that.
Thanks.
Because there's not a lot that I can see that would be problematic in this, in this design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, she had 43 some acres to work with.
That helps.
As opposed to what we just dealt with.
It does.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Scott.
All right, we do need to have a public hearing on these. So at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 19-2 of the preliminary plat and in 19-3, the final site plan for 136 single-family homes and Port Riverwalk Center Homes. Anyone present wish to speak public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner?
Chair, short.
Commissioner Nabloch?
Are you ready for a motion in planning case 19-2 to move to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat with the outlined four conditions?
Unless someone has discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
We can, we can do discussion after the motion as well, but...
I can second.
Mr. Bradley, go ahead.
I'll second it and then I have a question for Mr. Harlicker. Is this a section that would have the amendment for the, the planting changes that you suggested?
The plantings and the flexibility issues are part of the site plan, preliminary and final site plan.
Please second.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead with your motion and Commissioner Nabloch?
So then, am I doing the motion for...
19-2.
19-2, Commission to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat with the following conditions, compliance with Title 11, number two, park dedication in the amount of $272,000... of 272,000 will be paid for the 136 lots, park dedication will have to be paid prior to releasing the plat for recording, number three, all engineering comments must be addressed, number four, all comments from the Anoka County Highway Department must be addressed.
You in second?
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Bradley. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and a decision by the City Council at their April 2 meeting. Then we will move on to 19-3.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve 19-3 with the stated conditions as well as the conditions discussed regarding the landscaping adjustments to the site plan.
You in your second?
I'll second, but do we have changes?
Do we have to address the item number 12 to the motion verbally or just infer?
We should put it in verbally probably. Condition number 12 and 13, I had a 13 for additional shrubs. Maybe that's overkill.
More shrubbery.
Do you want to amend that motion then?
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Harlecker.
Maybe I could chime in here and maybe tie in something with the landscaping. We're looking at adding additional evergreen trees by, go by lots. On the landscaping plan, it's listed as lot 151. That's the one that's got the side yard adjacent to Coon Rapids Boulevard, where we were looking for some additional evergreen trees. And then up on the other end, the lots between Zilla Street and Coon Creek, additional evergreen trees to provide screening along there, as well as intermingling the species of overstory trees along Riverwalk Drive. Does that cover all of them?
And the shrubbery?
Mr. Chair, I think the petitioner is trying to clarify.
The evergreens along Coon Rapids Boulevard?
Up to the microphone, please.
Dale Wills with Central Homes. The ones along Coon Rapids Boulevard, the reason those are thinner is there's a lot of trees, existing trees, and if we put trees there, they won't survive because of the canopy that's there.
All right, thank you.
Are you talking about house here? And this is all being graded. And this is where we'd be looking for the trees.
So you're talking in the area-
Right in here, on the property, not up the right-of-Boy.
That the county's putting in the trees there, though. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, overstory trees in the right-of-Boy. We'd be looking for some evergreen trees outside of the right-of-Boy on the back of these lots, kind of in this area here. Just to kind of intermingle them with-
That'd been a good conversation to have last week.
It's going to be a forest.
All right. Anything regarding the landscape trees?
So we, Mr. Chair, are we, like, firm on that's a recommendation we're making that's a condition? The changes goes, I've heard Mr. Harlecker now kind of summarize it, but I'm not sure are we in agreement that that's what was important?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bradley.
I'd like to hear from the petitioner to see if he's in agreement with Mr. Harlecker's recommendation. Back up at the microphone, I guess, please.
The intent would be all along Coon Rapids Boulevard, any house that has a side, the intent, so the ones that don't have evergreens, that was a miss, because the intent is to have those. Our hope is, as you drive down Coon Rapids Boulevard, you really have this really great look, not to disparage any other projects, but as we were going through this process getting feedback, there was a concern, the project, Grant, where is that?
By Arby's.
It's the other, yeah, it's the other town.
Phillips.
Yeah, and so the intent was, how do we avoid that? Because you drive down Coon Rapids Boulevard, you see in the back's a house, exactly. And so that was, how do we make Coon Rapids Boulevard look really romantic, is the best way to put it. And so any house that has a side, the intent would be to put multiple evergreens there to soften that look, because we're going to, mostly porches that go along there, but then we'll have those few side ones. The concern, as you get further down, you've got some topography there, and putting evergreens there, I'm not sure that would be the best use of those trees. We love trees and we want to put a lot of trees on this property. There, I'm not sure if that's going to give us the best value there, and we're open to it. But that's something that additional dialogue would have been great, to be able to talk about, where could we put these to get the best value? Because the intent is that you go down, and that area, because of the topography, that was designed to put the houses like that because you won't see that series of backyards and prison fencing, whatever you want to call it.
Sir, do you believe this is something you'll be able to work out with city staff?
Absolutely. I have to commend the staff. I mean, this has been, Dave didn't say it, but this has been a project that, about three years in the works, the staff has been phenomenal to work with. We would have absolutely no problems with working with the staff and say what works best to make this look good. So we'd be very comfortable with the recommendation of moving forward with a staff recommendation at a later date, kind of a, I don't know how you'd say that, probably not like that. But we'd be very comfortable because they-
To incorporate additional evergreens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can add a condition then.
And condition 12 would be, so to approve, so the motion would be to approve Planning Case 19-3 with the stated conditions, with the additional condition, item 12, to add additional evergreen screening along the Boulevard as determined between staff and Centra as appropriate.
And then also, Commissioner Geisler, change the ornamental trees along Avacet to overstory trees.
And to adjust the overstory trees along Avacet to overstory.
Mr. Chair, can I just add a point? And I think that recommendation, I think we understand it. I think the one thing that we have not pointed out, and I think we'll have to walk the site, is there are a number of mature trees on the property, and I think to some extent, if there are healthy ones, we probably want to preserve those. I don't think we want to take something out and replace it. But I think we have enough direction to figure out where it would be appropriate.
And to Mr. Fornelius's point, I think at the corner specifically right at Avacet in those first two or three homes, there's nothing there. Once you get deeper into the site, that progresses, so I think there's a graduated step into that of where that stops would have to be determined.
And then wasn't there some comment about shrubbery?
I think we're shelving shrubbery.
Okay.
It's 9:30. I didn't say that, did I?
For what it's worth, every foundation shrubbery plantings are on every single unit. There'll be significant plantings around buildings themselves.
So we have the motion by Geisler and a second by Schmokey?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Chair Schwartz, the motion should also include referencing the recommendation of approving the flexibility for use density sidewalks and street pavement.
That's the three additional bullets.
You can build that into this motion, as outlined in the staff's recommendation and the staff report.
And that's all right with the motion?
There were specific findings that were included.
Yes, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
All right, those are included. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. It's a recommendation by the Plan Commission with a decision, City Council on April 2. Congratulations.
Good work. This is the way to change things.
Finally, that property will start looking like something, it has an open field.
We are excited about it.
And Planning Case 19-6, zone change, to eliminate the PUD designation and change zoning from PUD Port RRO to Port RRO at 100th Avenue and Bluebird Street, City of Coon Rapids. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, this is essentially a housekeeping issue. Back in 1980, as part of an expansion of an old shopping center, they couldn't meet the setback requirements because of the construction of new streets. In order to allow that shopping center to expand, they gave it a PUD designation. With the new project that was proposed tonight, that PUD designation is no longer relevant, and so staff is recommending that the zoning be, zoning amendment be changed or zoning code be changed to eliminate that PUD designation. The new zoning designation would be Port and River Rapids Overlay. It's about 50,000 square feet. It's located right in the, right in the middle of the site between Bluebird and Crane Street.
Okay. And Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? All right, we need a public hearing, so at this time I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 19-6, the zone change to eliminate the PUD designation and change zoning from PUD Port River Rapids Overlay to Port River Rapids Overlay. Anyone wish to speak at public hearing? And seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
In Planning Case 19-6, I move to recommend approval of the proposed zone change to eliminate the PUD designated designation based on the findings as cited in our packet. There are three findings.
Second.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. It's a recommendation by the Planning Commission and will be introduced by the City Council at the April 2 meeting. And Mr. Harlecker, anything on our other business?
Got the Lucy Hospital of Hellcat is currently being viewed by the Investigations Department, so they'll be moving it from out front of the emergency room to up on the roof, just behind the emergency room. The Honda station, or Honda, is moving along. They'll be submitting for a sign permit, so that's a good sign. The Chrysler dealership is almost finished. I believe they're getting ready to start demolition of the existing building.
Yeah, because they're in the new building.
Yep, yep. Next month, we've got two applications. We have a Metro Storage is looking to put an indoor self-storage facility on a vacant piece on 124th and Main Street, right across from Menards, it's next to the orthopedic office that's there. And then we've got an office warehouse that is being proposed for the end of Exion Street, down by the Holland Trucking and the, used to be a Budweiser Distribution Center, the end of that cul-de-sac. There's about a 10-acre site down there.
Didn't the council enact the moratorium on the-
They submitted their application prior to the moratorium taking effect.
Mr. Chair, can I just add to that? I realize it was a planning mission, wasn't that involved in that, in that discussion or decision, but will be as we go forward. So that moratorium, development moratorium relates specifically to self-storage facilities. And I think on March 9, it went into effect. So then we have six months to consider potential changes, study relevant issues. Council had, when that last item on Vale Street, the one that the commission denied and then they appealed it to the council, there were a number of questions that came up during that. We also had another self-storage facility on, what was it, 101st and Foley?
Foley.
And then given all the interest in these other facilities, I think council just wanted to hit the pause button. And so coming up in April, we have a work session to kind of get their initial reaction to that, and I would anticipate that as part of that, we'll come back to you to also get your feedback on that topic. So you'll be involved in those conversations as we go forward.
Thank you. And Commissioner, anybody have anything? If not, motion to adjourn.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I make motion to adjourn for the seat.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Meeting's adjourned.